Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this Tampa City Council meeting to order. If I, um, all right, thank you very much. I yield to Councilmember Hurtak for the invocation. Yes, ma'am? Okay, a moment of silence. Please stand for that and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. And please silence your cellphones. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have roll call, please?
Carlson. Hurtak. Flendenon.
Here.
Henderson.
President.
Vera.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Meniscoco.
Here.
We have a physical quorum.
All right, can I get a motion to adopt the minutes from May 1st, 2025, in the evening session held on May 8th, 2025? We have motion, Councilmember Henderson. Do we have a second? Second, Councilmember Flendenon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, I would like to make a motion to reconsider a prior decision of the City Council uh, from the last regularly scheduled meeting, which was um, uh, two weeks ago during the day, but it was the last regularly scheduled meeting. I was on the prevailing side. The vote was for Chair and then maybe also Vice Chair. And so I would like to make a motion to reconsider that. Uh, the reason is that, um, after the meeting, we had a meeting, uh, to discuss decorum and we found out briefly in the meeting, but then in disturbingly in an article in The Times later, that the mayor had sent a very strongly worded letter to us. Um, I will pass out copies of this, um, that has a copy of the, the letter the mayor sent, the article in The Times, and then also the email from, uh, the chair's staff person. The mayor sent this letter to the chair, um, on March 14th. The article was on, uh, May 8th, and then we received it on, uh, May 12th. And so, um, I, I, I'm disturbed by that because the chair is supposed to be elected by the City Council and represent the City Council. And we asked at the beginning of the meeting what the agenda was. The letter had not been put into on base and we were not informed, um, in detail what the discussion was going to be about. So my motion is to, um, to reconsider the vote, uh, for Chair next, um, from, to reconsider the vote from, for Chair that we held at the last regularly scheduled meeting.
Uh, Councilman Vera.
Uh, yes, sir. And, and what I would ask, uh, for this, uh, for Chairman Meniscoco and for Councilman Carlson, we have some, um, presentations. Um, I, I, this may require some robust comments, uh, as well as contemplation on the parts of members, et cetera. Um, I would ask that this be done after, um, our three presentations, just because this may require some time. And I would hate for, we have some, including a very meaningful presentation, a couple of them, in fact. Um, and I would hate for, uh, these folks to have to wait during this, which is a, uh, and again, I, I have my feelings on it, which I will share, but I'd, I'd ask that this be done, um, after, uh, the, the presentations, if at all possible.
Could, could-
No, he's already, you've already made a motion, correct?
Yeah, could we, um, there, as I understand, there'll be two motions. One is should we reconsider, and the second would be for the vote. And so maybe we could vote, if there's not support to reconsider, then there's no sense to continue on. But if we could just vote to reconsider, and after the votes, then, then, um, maybe I'll make a separate motion just to have the vote following the presentations. Would that be okay?
Well, go ahead and make your motion. And that, make that motion formally, then?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, as, as being one of the votes on the prevailing side, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the vote for Chair, um, that was held at the last, um, scheduled meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Councilman Vera with the second discussion. Councilman Miranda.
I, um, your truth is that you, you are on the prevailing side, so that's the only ones that can make it. You're absolutely 110% correct. However, you said so many things about May 12th or May 14th, or whatever it is. Are we saying that the mayor had an influence in picking of the chair?
I'm not saying any of that.
Well, I'm saying that. Then what's the reason for bringing in the mayor's name? And I'm not here to protect the mayor. I just want to know why. The public wants to know why.
My point was that the mayor sent a letter and we didn't see it until after the meeting.
It's the letter.
That we didn't see it after the meeting. What's the cause for the, for the reconsideration?
Because we need a chair who is, my reason is that we need a chair who, um, represents City Council and would not allow us to walk into a meeting blind and get blindsided by that discussion. We didn't know what it was when we walked in.
I want to say something, and I really don't give a damn what they think about me. This is the most dysfunctional council I've ever worked with.
Not me, Charlie.
No, I'm not saying individuals.
Okay.
I have never seen anything else like this. But you know what? You have to get used to it nowadays, because that's how the whole country is. Divided on one side, tore up on the other side. When we were kids, all of us growing up, we didn't have anything, everybody was happy. Now we have a lot more, and very few are happy. There's something wrong with us, all of us. This country is falling apart. For whatever reason. It's not about Democrats or Republicans, it's about humans in the United States of America. And it's time that we stop this bickering and stop doing the job that we were hired to do for the citizens of this city. This is every week. So, you know what? I'm willing to call it quits, get the hell out of here. I cannot take this much longer. I want to learn one thing from the wood. Those who think every week are every week. And I'm not mentioning, ain't all of us I'm mentioning. So what are we here for? Serve ourselves? I don't give a damn what the mayor says. All seven of us got elected here to represent the people that we do every week. However, if you do, you know, they blame the people who left on the mayor. And I'm not here to represent the mayor. I have never talked to the mayor about this, and I'll take a note and I'll take a lie detector test. Where in the world are we going? First of all, the one that left from the CRA has never worked for the mayor. The CRA is a council responsibility headed by the council, and she left. You want to blame the mayor on that one?
Yeah.
Yes.
What about the others that left? What about the one we hired at 10 o'clock in the morning? He calls at 8 o'clock at night when he saw us on TV and says, "I don't want to work with you guys. You guys are disruptive." That's a lie too, huh? Call him, he'll tell you.
Wait, we have a, we have folks in order. Uh, Councilmember Henderson, Councilmember Hurtak.
I have a point of order. I hate to do this, if I may, which is that I- I had done the second, only so we could vote on this, and then have the remaining after, um, the presentations. Um, and so for purposes of that, I hereby withdraw my second. Um, I, I do want to get to this motion, but again, I want to get to it after presentations. That's, that's, that's why I did the second. That's why I did the second.
So is there another second to keep it going? If not, we, it'll, it'll hold it until after the presentation.
That's, that's my intent, to hold it after. That's-
So no other second? So the second is withdrawn and-
I'll do it after the second, I mean after the-
Okay. All right, well, Mr. Shelby, I have to go over the approval of the agenda and the addendum. Do, wait, let me do that, um, wait, no, you go through the rules of, uh, and procedures of public comment, and then I'll do the housekeeping. So go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Uh, members of council, members of the public, Martin Shelby, the City Council Attorney. I'm here to talk briefly about the rules of decorum for the conduct of today's meeting. Members of the public are allowed a reasonable opportunity at the beginning of today's meeting, uh, after the ceremonial, uh, to address any item on the agenda before City Council takes official action on an item. A three-minute time limit applies to all speakers providing public comment. Speakers and members of the public are also reminded that you are to please remain, uh, refrain from, uh, disruptive behavior, including making or, um, making vulgar or threatening remarks, or making or causing disruptive noises or sounds, or displaying signs or graphics. Speakers are also reminded to refrain from making personal attacks against any city official, staff member, or member of the public. The chair will rule out of order any person who speaks without being recognized or attempts to address the City Council from outside the speaker area at the podium. Persons failing to comply with the City Council rules may also be ruled out of order and, at the discretion of the chair, may be removed from the chambers for the remainder of today's meeting. Now, if you're here to speak on an item set for a public hearing, you'll have that opportunity when the item is heard later in the agenda. Now, no public comments will be taken during staff reports. The time to speak about those items and the items on the consent agenda is during general public comment. Now, if you wish to speak during general public comment, uh, you have that opportunity by filling out a speaker card and placing it in the box outside the chambers, one card per speaker. Cards will be accepted until the start of general public comment. Each person submitting a card will be recognized by name to approach and speak. A three-minute time limit applies. Please print legibly. A name that cannot be read will not be called. And if you need assistance, please see, uh, the city staff. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, the housekeeping here, uh, we have a memo from Councilmember Flendenon pulling item number 35 for discussion and be heard first under staff reports yesterday.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I actually had a briefing with our legal staff yesterday, and they were, they actually answered all the questions I had pertaining to item 45, 35, so unless anybody else has any issue-
I would like to pull it for a separate discussion.
All right, so we're going to pull item number 35. Do you want it under staff reports or under, for a separate vote when we get to that committee?
Separate vote, separate discussion. So, is it, we don't need it to-
Okay, so we're going to pull it at, at the committee time, not at staff report. Okay, so I'm going to keep, uh, number 35 in mind, or we will keep number 35 in, uh, in mind when we get to that. I'm going to go through the staff reports, uh, item number-
Could I, I would like to pull 45 and 46 for a separate vote also, please.
All right, when that time comes, just send a reminder and a verbal reminder, and then we'll do that. 45 and 46 will be pulled for a separate vote. All right, uh, staff reports. Uh, is there an administration update?
I'm sorry.
Yes, wait, yes, Mr. Shelby?
If I can, just direct council's attention to two items on the agenda for first reading consideration. Um, I, it's been brought to my attention by members of the public regarding those items, and I wonder if council would consider, um, amending its, um, order of business if it so chooses, or just keep them where they are. They are items number 67 and 68, and they both can contemplate the renaming of a park, or in this case, a playground. Particularly, I understand there are people here with regard to Lisa Marie Chesser, uh, naming, and, um, they would like the opportunity to speak. Uh, would council allow them to, um, speak during a public comment for those two items because they're first reading consideration? And would council contemplate, uh, wanting to take any action or just leave them where they are? It's up to you.
Yes, Councilmember Flendenon.
We changed our rules so they can speak on first reading now.
Yes, but they're all here this morning and they are, and they would like the opportunity to be able to-
So how about after?
How about, I would just motion to move item 67 to 68 to add to the first order of business after the commendations.
Yeah.
After commendation, after the public comment?
After, after the public comment.
Well, we could hit, we could do them and allow them to speak to those issues-
Oh, and they can leave.
And then do public comment.
That, that'll be fine. Thank you very-
Second.
Thank you for that consideration, council.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, I'm going to go through the staff reports. Chief of Staff, Bennett, is there anything for administration update today?
No, Chair.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go through the items. Number 72, would we like staff present?
We, we got a briefing on this already.
All right, so 72, yes, sir. Councilman Vera?
I was talking myself.
Oh, okay. So no on 71. How about 73?
Yes.
72 is no staff needed in person. All right, item number 73, yes? Is that correct? All right, we're going to do yes on 73. How about 74? It's $5 billion. Okay, no on 74. How about 75? No on 75. 76?
That's part of 75, yeah.
All right, so that's a no. All right, item number 77, yes will be in person. 78, yes will be in person. Um, 79?
Yeah, and I was going to say, if it, did you, if I may, uh, for 79, yes, that we had also motioned to have the project manager come and brief us on the status of Station 24. Um, so I don't know if that's being done today or for the next quarter, but just making a reference to that. But yeah, I would say since 79 goes with 78.
All right, so we're going to do yes, and then I'll just make a note, uh, because they're similar. Uh, item number 80, do we need folks in person? There is a memo from, uh, Mrs. Nguyen, Administrator Nguyen. This is about the, um, increasing the summer youth program to potentially 72 participants.
I, I'm fine with-
I think it'd be good to have her come in.
Okay.
There's been so much public interest in that.
Yeah, and I, and again, I spoke to at least one member of the public at Christmas time, read, saying that I would support it, and I, I want to keep my promise. Uh, item number 81.
Um, for, for, yeah, for 81, um, I have to make some calls in between now and then. Um, so, so yes for this, but, um, I may need to continue this depending on something, or seek to continue it, but yes for now.
All right, 82. We have a memo from, uh, Mr. Mulkey.
I'm fine with it.
All right, so no on 82. How about 83?
Um, no, I don't, I don't think so.
All right, no on 83. How about 84? 84? This is, um, the WMBE and SLBE contractors. No? We have a memo from, oh, I'm sorry, Carl Brody is asking for an extension to June 5th to present. So let's move 84 to June 5th under staff reports. We have motion from Councilman Vera, second, Councilman Miranda, all in favor? Aye. And then written staff reports, can I get a motion to receive from file 85, 86, 87, and 88? All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second from council, uh, motion from Councilman Miranda, second, Councilmember Flendenon, all in favor? Aye. Councilmember Hurtak.
Sorry, I just wanted to say that, um, item 86 is really, uh, important in that it allow, it's talking about the rules to allow, um, motorhomes to be in front of people's homes. And we had an issue that we didn't know of, of the legality of that after the hurricanes, and now we've come back to, to have a solid, um, you know, ruling on that, to allow that so people can live in an RV on their property while they're fixing their homes. It's a really important thing for this next, as we begin this next season, and I just want the public to know that that was done.
Sounds good. Um, thank you very much, ma'am. Item number 88, they're asking for a continuance to the next available council meeting. These are written staff reports. So I, is there room on June 5th, under written staff reports? It's okay. All right, so can I get a motion for 88 to, uh, be continued to June 5th, 2025, under written staff reports? Motion from Councilmember Flendenon, second, Councilmember Carlson, all in favor? Aye. All right, um, that's it. The 130 public hearings, we have a, a continuance request on 65, but we can't do anything until then. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda and the addendum? We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, second, Councilmember Flendenon, all in favor? Aye. Council, or Mr. Shelby?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and with regard to those items, if that need no discussion, will council then please take care of those after all the other items on the consent so they can be moved this morning, those large ticket items?
After we do consent?
After we do, yes, at the end of the consent. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right, just remind me, or remind us, clerk. All right, thank you very much. We're going to go to commendations. Councilmember Vera is going to start with the Gold Star Families and their presentation about Memorial Day. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. Can I go first, since the kids are here?
Sure.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, you want to go with number two first? Oh.
Well, the kids have been here a little bit longer than I had anticipated. There's testing today.
Is that good with you? All right, I'm sorry, Councilmember Henderson.
I don't think the kids are going to object to the length of the test.
It's an important test.
All right, item number two, Councilmember Henderson.
Kids, come on and stand up with me for this commendation. Good morning, Honorable Chair and fellow council members. Good morning to the public. Today I am presenting a commendation from the City of Tampa to the Thaddeus M. Bullard Academy Sly Middle School Magnet Robotics Club. And I'll just read the, uh, commendation with the students in front of me, um, you know, for efficiency and everything else, and then we'll have, um, someone come up and speak. Whereas, the City of Tampa takes great pride in recognizing the exceptional achievements of the Thaddeus M. Bullard Academy at Sly Middle Magnet School Robotics Club. In only their second year, these talented students have demonstrated outstanding skill, teamwork, and dedication, earning commendable success in the field of robotics. And whereas, the Robotics Club has excelled in competition with three of its teams earning fifth-place rankings among 20 competitors, a testament to their perseverance and technical expertise. Furthermore, the club's receipt of the esteemed sportsmanship award reflects its commitment to integrity, collaboration, and excellence. And whereas, the unwavering support of the City of Tampa, Tampa City Council, through the unanimous allocation of social action and arts funds through the Bullard Family Foundation, has played a critical role in fostering academic excellence, critical thinking, and teamwork among its innovators. Now, therefore, on this 15th day of May, in historic Old City Hall, the City of Tampa proudly commends the Thaddeus M. Bullard Academy at Sly Middle School Robotics Club, expressing sincere admiration for their achievements and dedication to advancing STEM education and innovation.
All right.
And this was funded through the social action funds, as I said, through the Thaddeus, um, the Bullard Family Foundation, and we'll have Mr. Bullard come up and say a few words.
All right, good morning, sir. Please say your name.
Good morning. Uh, Thaddeus Bullard, AKA Titus O'Neil. Uh, I, uh, first and foremost want to thank, uh, Councilwoman Henderson for her unwavering support, along with the rest of the council, for giving us this opportunity. Uh, as many know, I do a lot in this community, but it's a lot- As many know, I do a lot in this community, but Sly Middle Magnet School has been a project of mine since 2015 to turn that school from an F school into where we are now, is a B status school, which is why I'm very glad y'all skipped ahead so we can get these kids back to testing. These kids went from not having a robotics club at all to fielding three robotics teams. And the, I guess, the greatest amount of joy that I got, not for the fact of where they placed at, but more importantly, they are three kids, or three teams that come from the six highest zip code for children living in poverty in the entire state of Florida. At one point, this school was very insignificant, and these children, and these families, and these people that are working hard, teachers collectively, are showing more and more that they are very significant, not only to the success, the success of the school, but the success of the community. I would be remiss if I didn't address something similar to what Mr. Miranda was speaking on in regards to my disgust with political and polit, the political landscape. It's one of the reasons why you guys will hardly ever see me in this chamber. It's one of the reasons why you'll never see me in Tallahassee or in DC. My life was changed by people from all walks of life. I'm, you know, the, being a person that was a product of a rape, mother being raped at eleven, having me at twelve years old, if it wasn't for the influence and the, the investment from people from all walks of life, Democrat, Republican, Muslim, Christian, I wouldn't be in the position that I'm in today, not only to not only ask the council for their support, but also be able to be a light for these children. And in return, these kids are a light, a constant light, not just them, but every kid that I have the opportunity to serve, whether it's here in the city of Tampa or throughout the globe as the global ambassador for the WWE. I would like to echo, there have been many days that I've woken up and like, what the hell are we doing as adults? I've been wondering, what can we do on a consistent basis to change the narrative of what a good human being looks like, and what great opportunities can do for people from all walks of life, not only if you have, but if you don't have? I don't have to do anything else my entire life and I'll be fine. I'm debt-free, I'm stress-free, my kids are in college, but I do this because people ask me all the time, why do I do what I do for people? How can I not? I'm very fortunate. You guys and ladies and the people in the community are very fortunate. Every day we get a chance to wake up and be above ground. And so it's a choice. My choice is to continuously put back the gratitude and the dignity that was placed in me into these kids, into these families, and I am very unapologetic about that. I have zero desire to ever run for any of your office, the mayor, the president, the governor. So I have every right to be very open and honest and truthful, which I think transparency and truthfulness is something that's a lost art in the land of politics. So I ask that, whether it's the people that have a chance to speak on different things that you don't, you conduct yourself, make your argument, be strong in your argument, but don't attack people. It's not going to resolve anything. Our kids are watching, and the only thing I can say in the end of the, last, in the end of the day, is that it's not the cars, or the clothes, or the house that I provided to my kids, it's a good last name. And that's the best gift that I can ever give to my family, that's the best gift that I can ever give to my community, because at one point when my life was insignificant, people made it to the point where I can have some significance. So that's where I'm at at this point in my life. I thank you guys for your, not only your ability to sit up here on a consistent basis and hear what you have to hear, make votes on what you have to make votes on, be out in the community, but the number one promise that I would ask all of you to keep is that you do everything possible to make this community better, not because of the color of someone's skin, or their political affiliation, or where they come from, but because it's the right thing to do. God bless you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're a good man, Mr. Bullard, and to all the students, we're very proud of you. Thank you for being here. Thank you so much. We'll just wait a moment, and then Councilmember Viera, would you like to go for real this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. We have here two very wonderful people. Every year for Memorial Day, we always have our Gold Star Families come and to talk to us about the meaning of Memorial Day, and we have two really remarkable people here. Memorial Day is coming up, and I think this is the last council meeting where we can, because we, before we, this is the last one where we can have actually a presentation on Memorial Day. We have two very wonderful people here. We have first Ms. Lori Fleming. Lori's son was Sergeant Terry Michael Lisk, who was killed in action on June twenty-sixth of two thousand and six, of injuries sustained when his unit received fire from enemy forces in Ramadi, Iraq. Sergeant Lisk had joined the United States Army in two thousand and four, knowing that he would be deployed in a post-September eleventh world, and, and he carried forward. He left behind a family, including then a seven-year-old daughter. When Sergeant Lisk was killed in action, the New York Times actually profiled that, that when his body was returned to his unit, all of the individuals who were there stood up and saluted it, and it was captured by a Times reporter, including an individual who was hurt in a stretcher. So we honor the legacy of Sergeant Lisk and the sacrifice of Lori Fleming and her family. We have here Ms. Annette Kirk, who's an incoming president of the American Gold Star Mothers, the national organization, and next year they're going to be having their convention here in Tampa, Florida. Herself, she is also, along with her husband, a United States Army veteran and an honorary Veterans Treatment Court mentor with Colonel DJ Reyes under Judge Michael Shanti. Her late son, the late Army Private First Class Paul Kazupi II, was killed in action in Operation Enduring Freedom in Afghanistan on August eighth of two thousand and ten. He was twenty-three years old and hailed from Plant City. He was a graduate of Armwood High School, where he would graduate in the top twenty percent of his class, and a week before his passing, his death, he was honored with an Army Commendation Medal for his efforts to save an Afghan child's life who had lost both legs and an arm. So we honor their sacrifice, and now we will hear from these two wonderful women on Memorial Day.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
He said you were going first. He doesn't know me very well.
Thank you, Councilman Viera.
And please state your, your names.
My name is Annette Kirk. Thank you. I'm honored to be here today as the mother of Paul Horatio Kazupi II. I really wish that those boys that were standing here before us could be here to listen to us talk about our children. It's so important. As I've said before in speeches, these young children need to learn, growing up, that if they choose to go into the military, it does not matter. They all came from different walks of life, different races, religions, and political views. What did they all have in common? It was patriotism and a sense of selfless service. And they all supported their beloved country. Memorial Day is a reflection. It's for many, for those brothers and sisters in arms that served with those that died. So it's not just for the families. And, you know, these veterans, they made friendships along the way that they will remember for the rest of their lives. We know that Memorial Day, it's built around barbecues, and it's okay. We know that. It's okay to have the barbecue, but just take one moment to remember why we have the barbecues and all the sales. Just say their names. Do a Google search. Google knows everything. I'm forgetting anything.
Just remember, there's a difference between Memorial Day and Veterans Day.
Big difference. Big, big difference. I served. I'm still alive, though. I am a veteran. My son, he does not have a DD two fourteen. I do. Big difference. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you very much.
I'm good. Yeah, no, she said everything.
Well, let's give these wonderful ladies a round of applause.
It's, it's an honor that you're here. Every day is Memorial Day. And like you said, say their name, because there's that saying, and I've said this up here before, that we die twice, when we take our last breath and when somebody speaks our name for the last time. And thankfully, with the internet, like you said, do a Google search. I Google search Vietnam veterans all the time, and I visit their graves to leave a little American flag, or just to know that, even though I didn't know them, that they are remembered. I'm, I'm born forty years ago, but to this day, they, they may have died in the nineteen-sixties, but their names are said. I'll share their pictures on, on Facebook. It keeps them alive. So everything that you said is, is, is absolutely true. So thank you very much. Right? Thank you. Thank you. All right, our last ceremonial item is Councilmember Clendenon to present the ATU Local fourteen-sixty-four
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
This is one of my favorite times of the month, because I get to celebrate my labor brothers and sisters from ATU, and Steve Simon is here to introduce the ATU Employee of the Month, Stacy Jackson.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
Good morning, City of Tampa. I'm Steve Simon, President of the Amalgamated Transit Union Local fourteen-sixty-four, and we keep the City of Tampa running. I'm happy to be here this morning to introduce you to the ATU Employee of the Month, Mr. Stacy Jackson.
Woo!
Stacy is one of our trusted technicians that keeps our distribution pipeline in work and order on our later shift, which includes weekends and holidays. His role requires him to be our eyes and ears while most of the workforce is at rest, serving also as an ambassador when the public wants answers. On Sunday, April thirteenth, he demonstrated this clearly when he responded to a call that came from Councilman Carlson about a water, about water flowing on San Miguel Street. Upon arrival, Stacy assessed the severity of the leak, recommended that we wait to bring a crew in to begin the repairs until the next day so that we could alert Plant High School and others that would be affected and allow them to plan around the disruption that would take place. He took the time to explain to them, to explain to them the plan around the disruption that would take place. He took the time to explain our operations and the logic behind this approach directly to Councilman Carlson on site that morning. His calm and confident explanation left the neighborhood feeling reassured that the Water Department cares about the communities it serves. And we thank you, Stacy, for your participation in keeping the City of Tampa running, and on behalf of ATU Local fourteen-sixty-four, I would like to present you with this award.
Woo!
Congratulations. And if I may, I'd also like to read a portion of a letter from the mayor.
Okay.
Dear Stacy, congratulations on being selected as the Amalgamated Transit Union's Employee of the Month for your excellent professionalism, strong work ethics, and for going above and beyond in all aspects of your position. You demonstrate a firm commitment to the Water Department and to the city, and you set an example for others to follow. It is employees like you, Stacy, that make me proud to serve as mayor. Thank you for your dedication and service. Sincerely, Mayor Jay.
All right.
And also, I have the Water Department Director, Mr. Rory Jones here, and if you would like to say a few words, please?
Yes, well, you stole my thunder there. I was going to share the example Sunday morning, but, you know, it's, it's, it's not just that example. This, this gentleman works weekday, weekend, day, night, and that's just one example of many that I can provide to you. You are a great example. Appreciate everything you do for us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Well, I'm, let me tell you, I, you've got the whole crowd, you got Rory, you got Brad, you got Steve, everybody.
You got your coworkers out here, and you got anybody else out here that you want to introduce?
Well, you know, most of them are my superiors, my coworker, my team lead. I'm just glad to be here. Again, Stacy Jackson, certified distribution lead tech. I just want to give a thank you to the City of Tampa, more so the Water Department for giving me the opportunity to come, be an asset to this municipality. I've been doing this work for twenty years. I've been over, I did eighteen years at City of St. Pete. I've been over here.
And you upgraded.
Yeah. Yeah. You beat me to it. I've been here for two and a half years, and by far, this is the best part of my career so far. So I'm, I'm really grateful for the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to our future endeavors. Again, thanks for the recognition, and it means so much to me, and I'm forever grateful.
So Stacy, on behalf of Chairman Maniscalco and the rest of city council, I won't read it, but you can read it yourself. This is a commendation thanking you for contribution to the City of Tampa, and we really greatly appreciate it. Every time I, I'll thank you every time I turn that spigot on, and it's, I got clean, good-tasting water. Thank you so much.
That's what I do.
I appreciate it.
I am water.
Thanks. And counsel?
All right. We have gifts, we have gifts. We have a line of folks ready to give, give you some presents today, sir. Come on up.
I don't know if you want to stop her.
Yeah.
Now you get all the goodies.
Morning, counsel. Mike McCarthy, Step Towing Service. Congratulations on, sir. Your job well done.
Thank you so much.
I can tell you, you know, if we could float this guy, the city would be a, a whole lot better place. So thank you for everything you do for the City of Tampa and all the residents, and on behalf of Todd Step Towing, I present you a gift card to go out to dinner one night.
I really appreciate it.
Take the time off, you deserve it.
Thank you so much. Take care.
Good morning, counsel. Jill Whittecky, Tampa Theater. Good communication solves a multitude of problems, and it sounds like you know that well. So on behalf of the theater, we'd like to present you with a membership to come see some movies on us this year.
I really appreciate it.
Good morning, counsel. Lori Osborne with the Florida Orchestra. Mr. Jackson, your good deeds personally impacted me. My child goes to Plant High School. So because of your amazing communication skills, we knew what was going on. So I can't thank you personally enough. And on behalf of the Florida Orchestra, we would love to invite you and your family to an upcoming concert.
We'll be there.
So thank you so much.
Good morning, counsel. Brian Ford with the Tampa Bay Buccaneers. Thank you. Good morning, sir. Good morning, Mr. Jackson. From one behind-the-scenes guy to another, your story is incredible. Thank you for all that you and your family, the sacrifice that you put forth every day on behalf of our community and our great city.
Really appreciate it.
We have a little tradition at One Buck. Whenever anybody goes over and above, they get a game ball. And hearing your story, you definitely went over above, so you deserve this. So on behalf of the Glazer family and our entire organization, thank you and congratulations.
Really appreciate it.
Good morning, sir. Thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.
Steve Michelini, I'm here on behalf of a variety of different folks who'd like to give you a little something in gratitude, and there are the gift certificates. You need to take the letter with you. This is regarding Bella Brava, which is over in the Midtown section. They're providing you with a gift certificate for lunch or dinner. On behalf of Meat Market in Old Hyde Park, close to where you had that water disaster, they're going to provide you with a gift certificate, and you can enjoy yourself over there for lunch or dinner. On behalf of the Chicho Restaurant Group, breakfast, lunch, or dinner at any one of their locations. And on behalf of Jackson's Bistro over on Harbor Island, another gift certificate. So don't let Steve take them from you.
I really appreciate it.
Stacy, since Stacy, I just want to personally thank you again. You know, we we city council members, we're on the front line working with the public, and we get, I don't know, fifty to two hundred constituent issues a day. And all we can do is push them to the departments. And there's there's a lot of great people who really care in in these departments and respond. And I think you're a great example of it. And I wish someday somebody would do a public record search to see all the times I say thank you. And it's not enough. But we there there are so many quick responses that that I'm constantly saying thank you. I'm sure my colleagues are. And Rory's doing a great job with the Water Department in leading that and has been very communicative with the public and with us. And the quick story is the constituent called, and Stacy didn't know this, but she happens to be Tampa royalty. She's Mel's daughter from Mel's Hot Dogs. And and so she called and and said that it was the road was leaking and the and maybe the road was gonna collapse. And it happens to be right next it it's in the middle of the Plant High drop off and pickup line.
Right.
And so that started a whole process where the Water Department then had to communicate with Plant and the neighborhood and everything. And they did an outstanding job with that because I didn't hear any complaints about it. But I got off the phone with the constituent. I called Rory on Sunday morning, I guess. He picked up. Thank you. And I got in my car and drove up to Plant High. And when I got there, Stacy was already there. And so that just shows how fast he was. And so I I was from a constituent point of view, and there were several constituents that came out and talked to him. But they were so appreciative because they were afraid, is your house gonna fall in? Is the road gonna fall in? Can I drive on this? What should I do? And and I talked to Stacy for a couple minutes. He had already diagnosed it. When he got there, he knew what was happening. He was on the phone with people. And then, as I was about to leave, he was taking calls from several other people about to run to their neighborhood. So, you know, for Stacy and all the folks like him who respond to our constituents, work well with them, the constituents are so thankful that you solve their problems. And, you know, if we provide great customer service and care, as he did, you know, the city will continue to be a great place. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And your job is not only you, it's you showing the way to others to do what you do.
Yes, sir.
And when you look at this thing, you just talk about water. But they don't understand that the water system has over about two thousand miles of water lines under the City of Tampa.
Yes.
And they serve how many people? Seven hundred thousand. So what you do is an amazing job, and what the Water Department and all the employees do is equally just as high. But you're the one that responded. You're the one that did the right thing. You're the one that made the calls. You're the one that said, I'm not leaving until this is fixed. And at one time, we used to have, I don't know how many hundreds of breaks a year.
Yes.
And the pipes program was helping a lot. And what you guys do with the other divisions, stormwater, on Mr. Wyche's side, is unbelievable, both of you. Both divisions here are A1A. And by the way, I know they don't want me to brag on this, but the Water Department of the City of Tampa is one of only eight in the whole country of the United States of America that has a triple A bond rating. Thank you for what you all do.
Welcome.
All right. Thank you very much. You're the unsung heroes in the City of Tampa, and President Steve Simon here. You keep the city running. Again, if it wasn't for your whole team, all the constituent requests that we get, all the cause of it, and you're just boom, 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 working nonstop, making our city better, taking care of the people. And without you, you know, we couldn't serve the constituents like we do. So you deserve this. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
I think it's clear that the Tampa City Council supports the Water Department. So thank you. We really appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Stacy. Thanks.
No, we have Bill's motion. No, we have your we have your motion. I would go with Councilman Carlson first.
It's it's Council's pleasure. The question is that you might want to inquire how many people are here to speak on sixty-seven or sixty-eight. It's up to you. Or just hold it. So whatever you wish. It's what's Council's pleasure. There are presentations with those from Michelle Van Loon.
Yeah, let's wait for Councilmember Hertec to come back.
Chair, may I say something?
Sure.
It's not on um.
It's I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, which is today is Police Memorial Day, where we honor our officers who were killed in the line of duty. And we have here in the audience Division Chief of Hillsborough County Fire, Morris Lopez, who is a good man and a City of Tampa resident and constituent, and his grandfather, Patrolman Officer Lopez, I believe it was in nineteen thirty-six or thirty-five.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, excuse me, excuse me, was killed in action on Seventh Avenue or in Ebor City when he put his body in the way of a newspaper boy who was about to come into contact with some bullets that came out of the guns of some gangsters. And so I don't know if you're gonna be speaking later, sir, but but we're honored to have you, and we honor your family especially today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, yes, sir.
A woman of privilege. I'd like to congratulate my other half for our fortieth anniversary today. So congratulations and happy anniversary.
Andy's Italian. That's true. Andy is Italian. All right.
I just want to say something to Officer Lopez. You know, I was a young boy when that happened. That was in Ebor City. And his wife was named Maria Justa. She had a sister named Oga. And the reason I know all that because Sister Oga was married to my Uncle Manuel. So I remember the whole thing when it happened. The family up there, all over, all over the whole thing. But I understand. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much. All right. Councilman Carlson, you have your motion.
Yeah, I would just do you have it or sorry? I'd like to make a motion to reconsider a vote from the last regularly scheduled meeting where I was on the prevailing side, and the vote was for chair.
All right, do we have a second?
So let me speak on it.
Are you the second?
There you go.
All right, so you're seconding it to speak.
Um, yes, yeah, just to speak. So this is one of those things. How can I say this? When this issue first came up, I voted for Councilman Clendenin as chair. This is a motion for reconsideration on it. You know, there's decisions that we have to make in City Council that are fifty-one, forty-nine, so to speak. And this is certainly one of those because this isn't your everyday motion to reconsider and and everything. And it's a challenge, but that's all.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call vote. This is Councilmember's motion to reconsider the vote for chair that took place two weeks ago, since he was on the prevailing side. So we have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call vote.
Hertec? So like we have to make this motion before we can have a conversation about it? Is that it?
You can, I mean, Mr. Shelby, I mean, this is unusual. I don't remember this ever happening.
But this is just a motion to reconsider, not the vote for who's who would be chair.
Again, I I would really love to do this during old business because we just have a lot to do today. And I really want to listen to these folks who are here for Lisa Cheshire. I'm.
I agree.
I'm because I'm I struggle with this whole idea. I mean, we have so much to do. This would be a lot easier if it was a motion to reconsider some money or some like I just. I would really like to do this at the end of the day when we because we have so many people here, and we have so much in front of us today.
I know, but there's a motion to reconsider me being chair, but I'm being asked to run the whole meeting.
Fair.
Which could be till six o'clock tonight because we have a lot going on. And and that's it. Councilmember Miranda.
And I understand your plea. I really do. And I understand that. But it's already on the floor. That's either do it one way or the other. That way the public can get all the full content, so what we need to give, listen to what they need and what.
Okay, then then I just don't I don't want to spend any more time on this, so I'll say no.
All right.
So wait, Councilman, Councilman Viera.
Second is withdrawn because we're gonna spend a lot of time on this today. And this this, yeah.
So could I? Would you support if I withdraw my motion motion with a second?
And now we're doing the same thing we did before at the end of the meeting. The public is here. Let the public hear it.
So just motion 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 to table consideration until the until old business.
I'm just gonna withdraw, and if we talk about it during old business, we'll talk about it during old business. Let's move on.
Well, that's true because it could come up during old business.
Let's move on.
I have new business. It could come up during new business.
I'll bring it up again during new business.
I guess I'm gonna have to run this meeting like this.
You are the chair, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's move forward.
All right. So where were we on the item sixty-seven and sixty-eight? Because we had made a motion to get this item up. Is that correct, Mr. Shelby? If it's Council's pleasure, if if Council wouldn't mind, just by show of hands, how many people wish to speak on item sixty-seven and sixty-eight? If they're here today to speak? I don't. Sixty-seven, sixty-eight. Sixty-seven is for the New Abilities Playground for Harrison Boonstoppel, and sixty-eight is for Lisa Chesser. Just so that just so that I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I know the the black shirts are for Lisa Chesser. Is that correct? No, I saw Ms. Pointer. Just so that the public and and Council is aware, this is here on first reading consideration, which means that there'll be a presentation required by the staff unless unless. Right. And then what happens is it does not get adopted today. The public needs to know that officially, it's when the ordinance is adopted, it'll have to come back on second reading and an adoption public hearing, and that's another opportunity for people to speak. There was a question of whether this should be ceremonial that I had with a member of the public, but that is not set for ceremonial today. But as a consideration to the people who are waiting, I was asked to bring it up to the council to see for your consideration. So however you wish to move forward. All right. So we're gonna start with item number sixty-seven. Ms. Van Loon, come on up.
Good morning, Chair and members of City Council. Item number sixty-seven is an honorary naming request for Harrison Boonstoppel for the new Tampa All Abilities Playground. On March twenty-seventh, I made a presentation to you on the background and information on the young Mr. Harrison. We posted it on our website for public comment from March twenty-eighth to April twenty-third or twenty-first for almost three weeks, and we received no comments. And I am here to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Van Loon? No, is that the the completion of that? All right, so I can call up. I don't have any registered public speakers or signed up public speakers for item sixty-seven. Is that correct? I don't see anyone. All right, so Councilmember Viera, this was your motion. So would you like to read item sixty-seven?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And again, this is for Harrison Boonstoppel, who was killed here in Ebor City in Tampa in October of two thousand and twenty-three. A very special young man who was a Peppin graduate, who was a young man with special needs and who, with the help and love of his family, his mom and his dad and his siblings and so many others, really lived a remarkable life. And this park, which is for all abilities for people with intellectual disabilities, autism, physical disabilities, et cetera, the values of it fit one hundred percent who Harrison Boonstoppel was and and forever will be. We speak a lot today about people who are no longer with us and whose hearts we love and we remember. And he's certainly one of the most special ones. So I move an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, proving the name of the naming of the new Tampa All Abilities Playground in Tampa, Florida, to honor Harrison Boonstoppel, providing an effective date.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Yes, ma'am. Please read the vote.
Motion carries unanimously with Clendenin being optioned out of votes. And second reading adoption will be held on June fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, at ten a.m.
Thank you very much. All right, item number sixty-eight. This is for Lisa Marie Chesser. Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Van Loon, Real Estate, again. Number sixty-eight is an honorary naming of the new proposed park at Markham and Pine Streets near the MacDill Air Force Base in honor of Lisa Marie Chesser. On March sixth, I made a presentation on her background and contribution to the community and the people in need in her area. We post it to our website, March sixth through April fourth, for almost four weeks. We received no comments, and I am available for questions.
Any questions or comments? All right, we have four people that signed up to speak on this item. The first one is Jane Perkowski.
Can we all come up?
If you want to come up as a group, yes, ma'am. But I will only the people that I'm calling up to speak.
Absolutely.
Will speak. So Jane is the first speaker. Yeah, come on up. I know there's quite a few.
I got a blue t-shirt. I'm a printer.
It's okay. It's okay. There you go. Yeah, and I'll go to you to read it.
Can I set it up?
Sure, go ahead.
Just as everybody's walking up, Lisa Lisa was. Lisa, is the Lisa? Yeah, Lisa was very involved in the community. In fact, a few months or a year before she passed, we gave her accommodation here at City Council, and she was able to speak to us some. And then and then after she passed, as this new park was being proposed, then the community led by Stephanie proposed that we name this park after her, and it was supported by City Council. And thank you to the we probably got a hundred or two hundred emails from folks. So thank you to everybody for honoring Lisa.
All right. Thank you very much. Jane, is that is this you?
Emily.
Oh, Jane is the first speaker.
That would be me.
Go. Please state your name, ma'am.
My name is Jane Perkowski.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I would just like to speak about Lisa and what she did in our community to help others in the whole South Tampa community. She packed five hundred boxes a month for the G.I. Joes and sent overseas. She did that every month to make sure they had just personal hygiene things, things to remind them of being home. The smell of dryer sheets was so important. Having her pack book bags monthly with her grandson, with her, and going around and distributing them to homeless people that had absolutely nothing, nothing. Toothbrushes, toothpaste, deodorant, things like that. She cared about everybody. She didn't turn anybody away. So I really think that this park would be something that would honor her memory for everybody. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Our next. Our next speaker is says Jackie is who I see. Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Please state your your full name.
Hi, my name is Jackie Bedford, and I too would like to to point out that Lisa very much loved veterans, and we did pack boxes. Lisa was one of the few civilians that ever had the opportunity to work with the Marines for Toys for Tots. Every year, she made sure, and the broken toys, we fixed. We packed them up, and we made sure the homeless community and the unneeded the unneeded toys went to where they were needed and loved. Lisa, we she rallied. She'd say, I need donations. We need donations. We're gonna have a yard sale so we can earn money to send those boxes that we all packed to Iraq. So we she never boots on the ground. When the homeless camps were threatened to be thrown out and evicted from where they were, we went to the woods and we under Lisa's leadership, we cleaned up the woods just so those people could remain where they were. She made sure everyone ate. She went to to her grandson's elementary school and was told that there would not be turkeys in some of these community families. Lisa said, oh, yes, there will be turkeys. Everybody will have Thanksgiving. And she got us all together and made that happen. Lisa always made things happen for everybody. Lisa loved. She was transparent. Everything was factual. Lisa was also the president of the Women's Exalt Auxiliary at American Legion One Thirty-Eight. Lisa had, I mean, I can't personally, she helped me through a lot of things myself. But Lisa was for everybody. I've never seen anybody who could go from four in the morning till midnight every day and held up every promise that she made. Nobody went without ever. If you knew Lisa, you were very fortunate. She was a blessing to her community and to her friends and her family. She was a wonderful woman, and I'm so proud of her. Please, please see this through. We need this. Lisa deserves to be honored with this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. All right, our next speaker is Betsy. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name.
My name's Betsy Randall. That's hard to follow. There's not a whole lot to Lisa. She she did everything. She showed up. When you describe Lisa Chesser, you boots on the ground, just do it. She's there. She had how many phones? She would do a regular job, and that was above and beyond what most women could do. And yet she spent time, I don't know how she it must have been a divine intervention with Lisa. with Lisa. She was put here for a purpose. Personally, she's done so much for me when I needed her. She was there, she would drop everything for me. But you hear a thousand other stories from people in need, and people who couldn't make it here today for one reason or the other. I appreciate your time listening to us, and I consider this park to be a thank you, because we could never outgive Lisa, and it would be a blessing to have a memorial for her. And thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. And our last speaker is Emily Beal. Yes, ma'am, please state your name.
Good morning, my name is Emily Beal. In full transparency, Lisa Chesser was my sister. Our family moved to Tampa in nineteen seventy-two. Lisa attended school in Tampa and is a Robinson High School graduate. Following graduation, she held a series of jobs, including waitressing at the NCO Club on MacDill Air Force Base, and was the owner and proprietor of the Silver Dollar Saloon at Port Tampa. She became a general contractor, started Elsie's Construction, often fixing homes for free because people didn't have the money to fix their homes. Lisa worked as a concrete engineer for the Department of Transportation and for several years worked at Jacob Civil Engineering. Lisa's DNA and fingerprints are literally, literally all over Tampa. Her last project she worked on was the expansion at Tampa International Airport, the Selman Expressway, and even the Sunshine Skyway. She was and remains deeply connected to the city. Lisa made her home in South Tampa, had both of her children, Sarah and Joseph, at Tampa General Hospital. They're both here today to support her. While her career may have been in construction, her vocation was helping people. Lisa always made time for others who were down on their luck, less fortunate, and needed a little help. She would literally give someone the shirt off their back if that's what they needed in the moment. Showing kindness and preserving people's dignity was the core of what she was and inspired others to do. Early on, Lisa would take food into the homeless camps south of Gandy, offer a meal and a hand up to those who would accept it. As her efforts grew, her core supporters encouraged her to establish Hope on the Horizon, a nonprofit organization providing food, clothing, housing furniture, and home goods to veterans, the unhomed, and the food insecure in South Tampa. Through her charitable work, Lisa repurposed, upcycled, and redistributed tons of items, which in turn kept them out of landfills and gave them to those who had less and needed more. It made a difference. Lisa's charitable work touched the lives of hundreds, maybe thousands of people in the city. And Tampa has the, the city of Tampa, and has, this has the potential to impact generations. Naming this park after her is a fitting tribute to the work she's done, and hopefully helps people remember the difference she made and inspire them to continue it, pay it forward, and most importantly, be kind, and remember that every person deserves to live with dignity. I've only touched on a few examples of the impact she made and what makes her worthy of consideration for this honor, and I certainly hope you'll agree, and considering voting yes on renaming this park.
Thank you very much, ma'am. You've signed up on another card.
No, I signed up to speak. Lisa's name is on my card.
Oh, you have, you have Rome Yard here.
Okay, and Lisa's name is also on there.
Are you trying to, are you trying to speak twice?
Can I speak or not? That's the question. I mean, I should be able to. Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Okay, that's fine. Oh, that's right, it's a separate, go ahead, ma'am.
I appreciate you guys.
And please state your name.
Yeah, my name's Stephanie Pointer. I appreciate you guys bringing this forward this morning. There was a lot of confusion about this, and I'm gonna work with staff and get this straight on how the procedure should go from this point forward. There was a lot of, I, I misunderstood, and all these people were here, and I was very stressed out about it. So I want to say thank you. You Think I Never Sleep, Lisa made me look like an amateur. Her, she was in construction leadership. She was an angel in steel-toed boots. I mean, that, that is the most accurate description. I guarantee you that everybody here was a better person because she made them. I never cooked a turkey in my life. She had me cooking five turkeys one year. Five turkeys I made for one Thanksgiving, because she wanted to make sure people got fed. So, but her, her motto, just live, her disposition, her favorite song was Man in the Mirror by Michael Jackson, because she said, you can make the change. And you, and not only did Lisa make the change, but she made us all better. I guarantee you, raise your hand if you did something, because Lisa told you to. Okay? She was just amazing, the hair standing up on the back of my neck. Christmas gifts, thousands of kids got Christmas gifts. She never stopped. Her whole life was giving away to other people. And I guarantee you, I don't have any idea about her money, but I guarantee you she made good money, and I guarantee you she gave most of it away. Because she, I, I would catch her on the side of the road, pulled over and say, hey, Lisa, what are you doing? Because I needed to talk to her, and she's, I'm calling this lady's insurance company so I can pay her insurance so she can still drive a car to work. Or the next time I'd see her, what are you doing, Lisa? Oh, I'm paying somebody's electric bill, because if not, they're gonna shut off their electric. I mean, you just, you, you could, there was never an end. And you never, ever, she never said no, not if it made sense. And I will also say this, there are very few people in this world who scared me, and who I would not get into a fistfight with, but Lisa Chesser was one of them. So I just want to say that. And, and she is one of the most influential people I've ever met, and I'm gonna tell you something that's really, really, my mom's been dead for eleven years, but Lisa Chesser's house smelled like my mom's house. And when I walked in there, I was like, oh, my gosh, I'm home. So you cannot imagine, all these people who live south of Gandy and who love south of Gandy, they know that she, she was just amazing, and she wouldn't let us have a, a celebration of life afterwards, and this is it today. I think that's why we have so many folks here. Thank you.
Well, I would be honored to support this. Councilmember Miranda.
I just want to say thank you for being here, each and every one of you. You know, when you have a person like Lisa, we need a hundred thousand more like Lisa, because a lot of things never get done. I learned two things today. I learned about Lisa, and I learned where I can go eat Thanksgiving turkey at. So, but it better be well cooked and done right. But Lisa is the one that inspired all of you, one by one, doing different things that maybe you never even thought of, but because of her persistence and saying, these people need help, each and every one of you is also reading that thank you too from this council, because you've done what somebody else was already doing, and gave you a little shove to go do what she was doing. And that shows a lot of leadership without pressure, and all of you have succeeded in that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Carlson, do you want to go ahead and read it?
Yeah, just a comment, I'll read it. You all alluded to this, but, but, you know, there were people that are living in, in the forest in South Tampa, and, and many people look at it and say, okay, can you send the police in and chase them out? Lisa knew all their names, and she would try to help them find housing, and then if they lost the housing, she would help them find it again, and she would help them find food, and she put together the food kitchen and other things. And she inspired all of us to have empathy and humanity, and, and we can't thank her enough, and hopefully we'll all remember that. So I'd like to move item number sixty-eight, file number HN twenty-five dash one four three five two, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, approving the naming of the proposed park at Markham Street and Pinewood Street in Tampa, Florida, to honor Lisa Marie Chesser, providing effective date.
We have a motion and a second from Councilmember Henderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Go ahead and read the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on June fifth, two thousand and twenty-five at ten a.m. at three fifteen East County Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, three three six oh two.
All righty. All right, we'll just take a moment for the, the room to clear out a little bit, and then we'll go to public comment. Is Adrian Rodriguez registered online? She is? So I'll go Michael Randolph, Adrian Rodriguez, and then the in-person.
There's too much within three minutes.
Can I just say? Thank you to, I also thank you to Michelle Van Loon and her staff. This is a, a very time-consuming process, and so thank you for processing through all of it over many months.
Yes, thank you very much for coming. A lot of people, a lot of people, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good day. All right, we have two registered speakers. Michael Randolph is the first speaker, followed by Adrian Rodriguez, then we'll go to the in-person, which I have here. Michael Randolph, if you're on, please unmute yourself and state your name. You have three minutes, sir.
My name is Michael Randolph, and I work at West Tampa, uh, CDC. On April the thirtieth, our class welcomed nonprofits from around the nation, reflecting the widespread impact of funding reduction. Florida is one of three states with the highest number of federal budget cuts, along with the state of Florida reducing funding for nonprofits in general. Since the early two thousand twenty-five, thousands of nonprofits have closed nationwide, with California, New York, and Florida seeing a high number, number of, of, of reductions. Community-based nonprofits, arts, and education programs, and healthcare services have been especially affected by these cuts. Losses in nonprofit sectors, from January to March of two thousand twenty-five, nonprofits lost ten thousand poor town jobs, mainly in healthcare, human services, and international. The Trump administration government has downsized. Two hundred and eighty thousand federal jobs have been cut in the first four months of two thousand twenty-five. Two hundred and sixteen thousand were cut in the month of March alone. Our upcoming workshop on nonprofit development and funding opportunities are more important than ever time before, especially groups, for groups navigating the financial challenge. Finding the ultimate sources of funding, whether it be private, corporate foundation, or grant, grassroots funding is critical. Our upcoming workshop on May the thirty-first will be on national nonprofits. On June the twenty-fifth, we focus on nonprofits in West Tampa. Don't forget our upcoming workshop also for understanding, investment, and lenders, creating business, remarkable business plan, sales and marketing one-on-one, and artificial intelligence, as well as whole-based business and economics workshop. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Randolph. Adrian Rodriguez is our next speaker. Ms. Rodriguez, if you're online, please unmute yourself and state your name.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead, please state your name.
Adrian Rodriguez. Good morning, Council. I just wanted to say that reparations to the African-American community are long overdue, and I hope that the mayor, that they'll do the right thing and work with the Racial Reconciliation Committee, because Tampa has a big debt to pay. I'm actually wanting to speak again on the parcels and at Woodlawn Cemetery. If you go to Woodlawn Cemetery, find a grave, and you type in the top five surnames of African-Americans in the early nineteen hundreds, or late eighteen hundreds, Williams, Johnson, Smith, Jones, and Brown, you will see quite, many, many of them are buried in Potter's Field, but there's also many that do not have a grave location. As we know, that City of Tampa owns most of the forty acres at Woodlawn, I would say about ninety-five percent, which is occupied throughout the entire cemetery. So I just, the big question was, where are the Williams and the Johnsons, and the, and the Smiths, and the Jones, and the Browns, that did not have a burial, you know, space, lot number? So that puts a big question mark over the parcel of land. City of Tampa responded by saying that, at this time, the city's not pursuing acquisition of the property. The parcel lies outside of a designated CRA area, and any potential purchase would therefore require use of general funds. The city does not typically acquire or manage properties of its nature, and no funding source has been identified to support acquisition or ongoing maintenance. We're talking about maintenance on a one-point-four-six acre parcel of grass. That is what it would cost to maintain. If they now own about ninety-five percent of Woodlawn, why would they not want to own ninety-five-point-five or ninety-five-point-six? So I don't know why the City of Tampa spends money like a drunken sailor on the things that the mayor wants. The Hannah Center, the Rest Riverwalk Project thing. I'm not gonna go off on that. Let me just say that the millions and millions of dollars that are spent on bull crap, I'm trying to abide by the rules of decorum, we're asking for purchase to be, a parcel to be purchased by the city. There are black bodies on that parcel of land. I'm not gonna go back to two thousand fourteen, Arthur Green Junior. Should I bring up, you know, biking while black? Well, I've decided to call this buried while black, because they're being shown disrespect in death as they were in life. So I'm asking one final time, because this is not gonna be a mayor decision, because as we know, she has a problem with black people. That's my opinion. Coming on Tampa City Council to aggressively pursue the city looking into purchasing that parcel.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Have a blessed day.
You too, ma'am, thank you very much. Our speakers, in-person beginning are Mrs. Stephanie Pointer. She spoke on what was a public hearing, so this is for general public comment. Mrs. Stephanie Pointer, Carol Ann Bennett, and Tina Adams. All right, and then after that, Marty Green, Connie Burton, and everybody else. Yes, ma'am, please state your name.
It's always funny who talks to me on the phone. Stephanie Pointer. Okay, so Rome Yard's come up today, and you guys know Rome Yard is one of my favorite things to talk about. And, and we have this mayor's executive order, and on the second page, this is in your packets, I'm sorry, I should have waited. But my favorite part of this is the interruption or stop work order of three or more years in connection with the project subject to contrast for professional blah, blah, blah. That's a reason for termination of a contract. Okay. And it says right here on the next page, page three of your handout, it says May fifth, two thousand twenty-two. That was two weeks ago, was three years. I'm just saying. I also had some questions that I think you'd all want to take a few minutes and ask yourselves and ask when the items forty-five and forty-six come up. I, I wrote them on there for you. I'm not gonna go through each one of them, because everybody up there can read. I also, because staff, or because Mr. Shelby does not like for y'all to go into a cellar, but I wanted to show you what was in a cellar for Rome Yard. And none of this looks like anything moving forward, and I forgot to print out the pictures, but you know what, I went by there two days ago, and it looks like nothing. Okay, so I want to talk about if, if related group or Rome Yard, whoever the applicant, let's call them what they are, the applicant wants to push back the timeline again. Now, mind you, I can't get the first timeline, I've asked for it three or four different times, three or four different ways, but I only got the one from last year. So the timeline that's talked about on that memo is not the original timeline. This project has been in play since two thousand twenty-two, that's when you guys approved the resolution. Now, if we're gonna approve that for us, what are they gonna do for us? Because when you renegotiate something, you get more when you get less. First of all, I know that the Yellow Jackets need some space out there. I know that we are doing, that the county's doing a cultural center. Are we gonna ask for that? That, we need to look at the community benefits agreement, folks, if nothing else. We need bus stops in that area. They can go ahead and start on that now. How much longer are we gonna screw around with this project? We've got projects, Funland, look at Funland, it's almost done. And it was approved after this project. We need to take into consideration, if they don't have to build a cultural center, the land needs to continue to be in the property of the City of Tampa, it does not need to go to a related group. I have other issues, which I have pointed out to you in emails, like giving away those townhouse lots for twenty-five hundred dollars, and they can be up to a hundred and ninety-nine percent of AMI. I don't know about y'all, but that's about two hundred grand a year you can make to purchase those. That's poop. That's not affordable housing, that's not even attainable housing, that's rich people housing, because they sure as hell got a lot more money than I do. That's rich people housing, because they sure as hell got a lot more money than I do, but...
Thank you very much.
Don't save them millions and millions of dollars.
Carol Ann Bennett is the next speaker, followed by Tina Adams and Marty Green. Good morning, Carol Ann Bennett.
Please state your name. Yes, ma'am. Carol Ann Bennett, lifelong resident of South Tampa. A couple of years ago, City Council debated the use of FAR and single-use projects in South Tampa. The City Planning Department and the County Planning Commission staff researched development in South Tampa and presented this report. Please play the videos.
The Comprehensive Plan establishes unique visions for the new Tampa Planning District and the South Tampa Planning District. Those excerpts are shown on your screen. And these are based upon what the plan refers to as limited growth opportunities in these areas. In the research that we performed, you can see this slide displays the residential growth that has occurred in the city over the past 10 years. The most recent 10 years of growth is broken into five-year increments. 2010 residential units are shown in gray. And the growth that occurred from 2010 to 2015, that increase is shown in dark blue. And the growth that occurred from 2015 to 2020 is shown in red. The two districts that have seen the highest residential growth in that period are the new Tampa Planning District and the South Tampa Planning District. This trend is not in line with the Comprehensive Plan's vision for growth, which is supposed to be limited in these two districts. Looking at the new Tampa trend, it appears that the rate of growth, residential growth is decreasing since the growth from 2010 to 2015 was significantly more than the growth from 2015 to 2020. So the red is smaller than the blue. We see the growth is actually decreasing. Whereas in the South Tampa District, the opposite is true. The red, the growth in the last five years, is more than the growth that occurred in the five years prior.
Is there another video? Is that the conclusion?
No, there's another one.
Okay.
Based on the district characteristics, the Comprehensive Plan have viewed these two districts as providing, quote, "limited growth opportunities," unquote. There are also references in the comp plan calling these two areas, quote, "areas of stability," unquote. The comp plan really envisions the three core districts, Central, West Shore, and University, as having the most growth opportunities within the City of Tampa. The majority of transit and employment in the City of Tampa are found within the Central, West Shore, and University Planning Districts.
So I just want to reiterate what they're saying is that between 2015 and 2020, the rate of growth in South Tampa actually increased, and that the high growth you saw in New Tampa, it wasn't on the video, but it was due to large subdivisions that were approved a whole long time ago, and they're finishing out, so that is kind of an anomaly in its ending. So South Tampa has experienced the highest rate of growth, and University has only had a 1% rate of growth. And they are the job center and the area that transit can be expanded the most easily, according to Jean Duncan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tina Adams, Marty Green, Connie Burton. Good morning, ma'am. Please state your name.
Good morning. I'm Tina Adams. And first of all, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to the City of Tampa for expediting permitting and waiving fees for victims of the flood and people who, whose homes were flooded. I have friends and coworkers in Pinellas County who were not so fortunate as to live in Tampa, where your support really meant a lot. So I also want to say thank you so much for approving the design phase for the South Howard Business, the South Howard Flood Projects. And I want to say that thank you on behalf of myself and a number of neighbors in surrounding neighborhoods, and a lot of the small businesses and doctor's offices in that area. Some of them unfortunately have closed, like Skin Savvy. But I just want to say you've thrown us a lifeline of hope, and that means a lot. And it means that we have hope that the city and our elected officials are actually listening to us and wanting to help the homeowners and small businesses. And it really means a lot, but we need more than just a lifeline. We need you to pull us out of the water, literally and figuratively, because we're all drowning. I brought you some lifesavers today, because I need you to be lifesavers. I need you to help us all feel safe in our homes again. This is a problem that is affecting people every time it rains. And everyone should feel safe in their homes, and we don't. Parkland Estates Civic Club now supports this project as long as it's the Howard to Swan route. I don't care about the route. I just want a route that will help the most people, be the most cost-efficient, and help people be safe in their homes again, because everyone should feel safe in their home. Your home should be your safe place. Please let it be again.
Thank you very much. Marty Green, Connie Burton, Valerie Bullock, Mentesna, Kila McCaskill, Segret Doss. Good morning, sir. Please state your name.
My name is Marty Green. I work for the City of Tampa Mobility. This is potholes and patching. And this is the potholes that I have done personally. And this is concrete that residents are putting in potholes, because the City of Tampa will not fix it. I told them the correct way how you do it. You cut it, you clean it, you put tack, and then you put the asphalt, which nothing was done. I was told by Supervisor Anthony Stafford that as long as the potholes pop up in the city, I have a job. But how can you, how can you not fix the things that's done right? I'm quite sure all y'all have spoke about potholes. So when I brought up issues, I got written up because of the emails that I have written. They told me, they refrained me from writing email, Michael Brown to be exact. He refrained me from writing emails. So how can you refrain me from writing emails and speaking on what, what the things that need to be done? I have went to HR, Kimberly Anderson, she's rattling with him, she's with management. I emailed Jean Duncan in this about it, and she, I never responded from her. Steven Simon, the, the union president, he's no good. He rub elbows with management. He, he's, not to be disrespectful to y'all, he want to be a politician. He don't want to help us. He's trying to get in another position. Instead of going and speaking on situations as long-term employees for the, for the purpose of raising the salaries, for the multiplier, it's from 1.2 to 1.9, to increase the cost of the living, they're adjusting it from 1.0 to 2.2. These are critical changes for all the old, for the old, all the older people that have been with the City of Tampa for over 20 years. So therefore, they're rattling out from the US, and the economy has went up. Right now, they are struggling. They're retiring and struggling. And instead of the union president wanting to step up and get, and talk to us and let everyone know what's going on, no, that's not correct. And going back to being written up for something that you bring to their attention about multiple lawsuits that could potentially happen. I have came up with, side down with management and told them, this is how we could correct this. But instead, we on, we making city TikToks saying they not like us. But how is they not like us, and we're doing it worse than they're doing it? I came from the county, so I know what's supposed to be done, and right now, we're not doing it. This supervisor that's over fixing fast is getting paid over six figures a year for something he don't know about. He got put in that position from some form of nepotism, because that's Michael Brown's friend. So therefore, something need to be taken care of. $100,000. We have three patched, fixed fast trucks, I mean, five. They, $380,000 from the people's money. So therefore, out of all five, only one is working correctly. So therefore, all this money that we're spending, something need to be taken care of, because the equipment is bad, and it need to be taken care of. We spend the taxpayers' money, and that's our money and y'all money as well.
Thank you very much. Connie Burton is our next speaker, Valerie Bullock, Mentesna, Kila McCaskill, and our last speaker is Segret Doss. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name.
Good morning, Connie Burton. May the 19th, 1925, was our 10-star general was born, Brother Malcolm X. And Dr. King said, you know, it ain't no problem that when you expose what is wrong. That's the only way we gonna have a proper healing. It has to be exposed. We have to have loud voices coming from up there. Everybody can't just be a head nodder. And what I seen this morning, from those dear wonderful people that came here and said that park should be named Lisa, and the other councilman saying that it should be named that. We don't want to hear no more why we, as African people, ain't gonna be able to name Fair Oaks, what we want it to be named. Ain't gonna be no turning us around, because we want to make other people comfortable. It's what we want in our community. What I'm here to talk about today is item number 80. Probably won't be able to sit through the whole discussion, but in 2010, that was when the first summer youth program was funded by the CRA. And the number that it landed in was 36. How did we come to 72? 36 times, 36 plus 36 is 72, right? So we said that the city and, and the board at that time, the CRA board, said we had had enough, enough time that we should be able to expand the program. I want to hear the numbers that was landed, and this is not an attack on Mrs. Winn, because I believe she wear 45 different hats with the city. But if people would just form real partnerships with the community, we could have suggested ways in which people can continue to work in landscaping as they are exposed to other greater opportunities within the city. But to intentionally, in my opinion, to sabotage that we can't get to 72, when this city has a $1.9 billion budget, the CRA has not been able to make significant changes in our community in almost 20 years. We have to offer our young people more than hope. They need economic opportunity. And if we track many young people in our community, we would see that based on the lack of economic opportunities in our community, we see the pathway to jail that was handed to their daddies, their uncles, their cousins, and we are planning on standing toe-to-toe in the legacy of Malcolm X and others that say that we are going to keep on fighting and struggling until we see significant changes in our community. We're not leaving it up to just our representative to do it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Valerie Bullock, Mentesna, Kila McCaskill, and Segret Doss. Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning, Valerie Bullock. I was, it was so disheartening and heartbreaking in here when all the people came up with their shirts on to vote for the lady Lisa for the South Tampa Park. I don't know her, but I heard all the good things that they said about her, and I'm sure she's a good woman, and that was a good honor that you all did. But back to the Black community. When Fair Oaks came down here in January, I believe it was, we all had on our shirts. We all stood up and talked about Coach Artist Gambro, how he was the grandfather to the neighborhood, how everybody knew him and everything. Then Ms. Abby Feely came, and everything got stopped, put on hold. So someone went up to her, are they going to vote on that today? No, we're going to put it off for six months. It shouldn't be disparaged like that. The same way how you rubber-stamp her, Artist Gambro should have got rubber-stamped too. And it's these kind of disparities that we are looking for answers. Well, why did this happen, or why didn't that happen? Because it was the same thing, the same scenario. And I'm sitting here, and I'm like, wow, is this happening? Nobody couldn't have told me it happened. I had to see it. And we need to rectify that situation. We need to put, whenever you put her on the agenda, Lisa on the agenda for June 6, you need to put Fair Oaks up there with Mr. Artist Gambro. That is how we remedy that situation. And another thing, the City of Tampa always saying they don't have no money. Somebody, please explain to me number 24. $1.1 million for some damn salt? Please tell me, that's not feasible. Did anybody do a study? Maybe we can get it cheaper? Why don't we buy the Clorox building, and we can have a salt right there to make the liquid chlorine bleach? That is a waste of money, in my opinion. And it's stuff like this that keeps sliding through the city. And then when we come up here, and I say, well, I've been in East Tampa all my life. I want my kitchen fixed. Oh, you got to jump through these hoops. We don't have money for that. We ran out of funding. Of course you did, because of making stupid deals like this. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mentesna, Kila McCaskill, Mr. Segret Doss is the last speaker. Good morning, sir. Please state your name.
Mentesna, Tampa, Florida. Once a huru, huru means freedom in Swahili. We as African people should always be thinking about our freedom. 825 years under occupation, under domination. 825 years. You know, I want to say something, want to get personal this morning. My mother, when my father was in his dying deathbed, my mother used to treat him, we didn't know any different, we was younger, but she used to treat him so bad. She would bring men in the house, have sexual relations with them. My father would be in the other room, nothing he can do about it. She used to treat him dirty as a dog. Then I seen what P. Diddy was doing to Cassie, and other people. My mother wasn't that bad after all. And then I see what City of Tampa do to Black people. My mother, P. Diddy, and some of the other Black brutes that you want to call Black brutes, like the extension of what you want to say is the example of an African man, if it's Bill Cosby, or whosoever, or whosoever, or whosoever, they weren't that bad after all. They had a program right here where they hired an African man to do a study when they want to do the police violence and whatsoever, whatsoever. The man did a study, was paid 50, 60, 70,000 dollars, some man out of Orlando, African man. The video couldn't even get working for his presentation. And ain't nobody did nothing about it. Nothing happened. So y'all treat Black people like dirt, and y'all want us to accept that. Y'all want us to, you know, the Fair Oaks example versus the other parks, South Tampa Park, that's a good example. That's how y'all treat us, and y'all want us to expect it. And y'all think African people, you think African youth acting out when we're doing whatsoever you might call it. But we have no opportunities in this city. If you go on West Shore Boulevard now, West Shore Boulevard is looking more expensive and better than Bay Shore Boulevard. South Tampa is looking lovely. East Tampa, they just running us up out of there. And the other thing I want to say for African people, and for this City Council that needs to be investigated, is that child support. Child support is a eugenics program. It's a eugenics program that's been going on since January 4th, 1975, and it is devastating African people. And they have all kind of illegal and unconstitutional separation of powers violations going on down there. And they need to do something about it. And the young man that's in prison for accidentally Bay Shore Boulevard, he need to be out of prison. And this City Council need to make a mention of that also. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Kila McCaskill and Segret Doss is our last speaker. Good morning, ma'am. Please state your name.
Kila McCaskill. Oftentimes, when the community comes here, particularly East Tampa, when we come here addressing our concerns and we share them, I just believe it feels as if it's not, there's not, the dots are not connected for you. And it could be because you don't live in that community. It could be because you've not experienced what we experience, being people of color and/or living in a marginalized community. I moved to East Tampa, so now I can experience some of the things that, the frustration that comes out when you see the people. And today I came because I wanted to bring it to your attention and hopefully connect some of the dots to see the disconnect and how it feels to us. It feels that you don't hear. It feels disrespectful. So I'm hoping that today I can draw an analogy to some of the differences that we experience as we look through what happens in East Tampa. Particularly, they mentioned the park. I won't repeat that one. But I came about Agenda Item 45 and 46 recently. One of my projects in East Tampa that I, I didn't want to do the project, because it had a lot of challenges. The City of Tampa had been working, the CRA had been working with the individual for two years. It was, there was a horrible process. The contractor on your list from your CCNA's, this was under the auspices of the City of Tampa. And it was horrible. They came to me, and I say, it's too much in here. It's too mu, I don't want to do it. No licensed professional contractor will want to work behind this project. That has been babysat by the City of Tampa. So I inherit the project, because I believed in the woman's project. Then I get the process, and the letter that was approved was the most unprofessional letter by the City of Tampa. Then I get the process and the letter that was approved was the most unprofessional letter by the City of Tampa. It didn't even have the seal on it, not even the City of Tampa seal. So I spent six months because I expect better. This is not gonna work for me. I'm not gonna work on a piece of paper that's got handwritten notes from Brett Cedric McCray and Vanessa Ross. So I worked diligently with Nicole Travis to get an approvable letter, one acceptable to me, to go present to a lender or anybody, any other contractor to say, this is what I need. And lo and behold, the City of Tampa, the CRA terminated the woman's funds because she didn't do it in their timeframe, what they thought was acceptable. And then I look at Related Group. Now, I know for forty-five and forty-six, things happens as a developer. I know Related Group is gonna do exactly what they're supposed to do. I'm not worried about when they start. But what I want is the same, I want you to look at that, the same patience you have for Related Group, I want you to have for this rehab in East Tampa on Forty Street, where people are asking for a change on that street. These contractors, things happen when you get into development. And I want you to have this same energy. I'll be monitoring the day to see how this navigates through this process, forty-five and forty-six. Because when I submit this email to you after this, I want the same type of response. Three years to do this project, and this woman sat under your leadership, CRA and city, for two years. And because she didn't complete it in a time that the staff, who has no experience doing that, feels is acceptable, I want you to remember that when I send you this email today. Forty-five and forty-six, apply that same energy to East Tampa.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Doss. Good morning, sir. Please state your name.
Good morning, people. Uh, I guess rolling right along on, make sure we, I put this in, make sure you show it to everybody, but, um...
Please state your name, sir.
I am still Segret Doss. Uh, and I'm also a disabled American veteran, uh, and used to be the owner of several homes. And I know one thing about Tampa, when you don't soft-shoe and yes, sir, master to you all, there seems to be a problem here. So I want to get to it. It's been said to not resist, uh, any man's weakness is to encourage it, and I'm here to call it out. And I want to start with Judge Emily Peacock, who, as you can see on the transcript, pretty much said to me, hey, hey, nigga, you ain't finna argue with no white man in my courtroom. Do you understand, boy? And when I stood up, what she did, you can see, is she ordered me to sign a settlement agreement against my will. And I can show you that as well. And I guess Blan Teagle, the head of the F, uh, the Florida Judicial Qualifications Committee, saw no problem with that because he said, hey, we're not gonna even investigate it, and when you black, the rules don't apply any damn way. That's just what it is. Um, and she was defending Mike Rowe down here, you know, Austin Row Baskels, right up the road here. And what they like to do is they like to go find doctors that work at the Veterans Administration to perform compulsory medical examinations on veterans, not, not disclose it. And the only reason I found out about it is because I went to a regular scheduled appointment at the VA, the same doctor walked in. Now, I don't know if anybody's familiar with Title eighteen USC two-zero-eight, but that's a federal crime. But of course, it's not a problem because they're gonna make sure that they send you over here to one of these judges like Judge Paul Hewie or Peacock, or maybe even Greg Holder, who kind of just does what he wants to do. And it's not a secret. And I know that, we all know that I was actually, uh, afforded the opportunity to continue my lawsuit against the City of Tampa and Greg Holder. And what was strange to me, I find out the same mayor that helped Tampa steal one of my properties by throwing me out in the street is running for mayor again. I mean, I don't know how many more damn properties this guy wants. And we're talking about Bob Buck one. Because we still fighting, we still gonna fight about my house. And by the way, I hope you're showing that to the good people as well. But, uh, I wanted to make sure I highlighted that Michael Victor, who still works for the City of Tampa, uh, I don't know about Pat Kennedy, but we on schedule for a pretty good situation here at the Eleventh Circuit Court of Appeals. I ain't gonna stop because I'm not wired that way. And what's kind of strange to me is all these glowing things that people have to say about veterans, I guess it doesn't apply when you're a black veteran, right? You could be honorably discharged into the City of Tampa. It don't damn matter. I'll be back to see y'all next week, and, uh, shout out to the University of Thomas Jefferson High School.
Thank you very much, sir. That concludes our public comment. We'll go to Board and Administration Appointments, item number four. Yes, sir. Oh, no, it's right after, right after on the, yeah, it's right after on the agenda. All right. Item number four is a resolution approving, ratifying, confirming the appointment by the mayor of Stephen Sutton to the Architectural His- Architectural Historian as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term. Motion from Councilmember Plendennen, and then Councilmember Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Do we have requests by the public for reconsideration of legislative matters?
Uh, good morning, Council Steve Micalini. Hi. I filed a letter requesting a reconsideration for vacating twenty-five oh-six. And I've provided you with a list of twenty-one different factual statements regarding this matter that warrant reconsideration. Mr. Jeff Italiano was out of the country and was not able to attend. The right-of-way being is remained and unused. We had twenty different departments and utility companies that weighed in on this petition and had no objection. And in that respect, there was a reserved, a request for reserving an easement for TECO and for the City of Tampa Drainage Department. There is no access to the bay. This is approximately a fifty-foot by fifty-foot square area that provides, um, was dedicated as a roadway, which was no longer needed. That area abuts two properties, one in the rear yard and one in the side yard of the, of the petitioners. That provides access, which potentially causes a liability issue for them regarding access and utilization of that area. A drainage easement has already been provided in some respects for the county. A conservation easement exists west of this property. There is no access to the bay or any other waterway. The area is approximately two-thousand square feet, two-thousand-nine-hundred square feet for the petition to be vacated. The right-of-way is held in trust by the city. Uh, the, the ownership of that, the underlying ownership rests with the adjacent property owners. It's not city-owned, it was not purchased by the city, and it's not operated by the city, except for the fact that it has a drainage easement. There are entities who have entitlements to this area, and they are only three, the city and the two adjacent property owners. The vacating restores legitimate rights of those abutting property owners. The, um, original proposal with the, for the streets and utilities, it was never dedicated as a park or associated in any way as a recreation area. That would be a change in the dedication that would be required for the, uh, for the plat itself. The open area is unsecured and leads to unsafe, unsupervised activities, personal injury, public nuisance associated with per- with personal liability. Liability extends potentially to the city as well as the adjacent property owners. The area under petition is located along an eastern edge of the area is vacant, unused, and for public purposes, except for the drainage and the utility easements, which were reserved. Access and maintenance is, will still be required to be provided. The proposed area to be vacated is not a recreation area, I'll repeat, not, and should not be used as one. There were a number of different activities that were stated that the neighbors were using it for soccer fields, for, for gathering spots and all of that, and this is to the detriment of the adjacent property owners. The proposed, proposed area cannot and will not be used for fishing, kayaking, boating, or any other access because there is none. So, anyway, it, it rely, it, it is directly adjacent to the petitioners, and they were respectfully requesting that they be reheard and that this petition be reconsidered. The proposed vacating does not increase or in the chances of flooding, nor does it obstruct stormwater in any way. It must remain without structures. Uh, it has to remain green. So I've sent that to you via email respectfully or request reconsideration.
Uh, anybody in the prevailing side of the denial wish to reconsider, Councilmember Plendennen?
Yeah, as I spoke during this, uh, public hearing, this was one that was really difficult for me because it, it just, it pulled me in different ways. I've subsequently spoken to, um, the, one of the other adjacent appropriate owner who was in Europe at the time. And based on some other information that I've received, I, I would make a motion to reconsider this item.
Do we have a second? Yeah, you, because you're on the, the supportive side, so you're good. Councilmember Vera with the second. Let's do a roll call vote.
Plendennen?
Yes.
Henderson? Vera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson? Hertek?
No.
Meniscago?
Yes.
Motion passes with Henderson being absent at vote.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Shelby, do we schedule this for a future? And because I voted yes, doesn't mean I'm gonna support it or not support it out of respect and as a courtesy, and because we're missing a council member, you know, so we can move forward with this. But that doesn't mean I said yes, or changed my vote, or whatever, but, so we can have a further conversation. Mr. Shelby?
Yes, um, I, I talked, I, excuse me, I communicated with Mr. Wigington, who's here. Uh, council will, now that you've actually, um, um, passed a motion to reconsider, it is now, uh, back on the floor, except it requires a public hearing, which means therefore council should set a public hearing and direct the clerk or the administration to provide the proper notice for the hearing. But we need, I am told by Mr. Wigington, two months. Is that acceptable to, uh, you, Mr. Micalini?
I think...
It has to be a no, it has to be a noticed public hearing. Is that correct, Mr. Wigington?
I understand that. It depends on what your calendar looks like, um...
July seventeenth is when the mayor presents her budget, and then we've limited staff reports, so that is gonna be a busy day. I would not recommend requesting July seventeenth, so, uh, after the fact. August seventh is another available date.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So I moved to, uh, set the public hearing for the reconsideration on August seventh, twenty-twenty-five.
It has to be, yes, we have to have...
Was it one o'clock or one thirty?
Can we can ask Mr. Wigington if he could just, with regard to a vacate, it's usually ten o'clock on a particular day?
Normally they're set at ten AM.
And it's, it's actually, the motion, so you're clear, is not necessarily for reconsideration. It's for the, the subject matter of the reconsideration. I don't know whether, Mr. Micalini, do you have that file number, or Mr. Wigington?
I, I, I'll tell you in a second, it's...
You have it?
Yes, I have it.
Go ahead, say it.
The clerk does, I believe.
VAC dash twenty-five dash oh-six.
So that should be included in the hearing, Mr. Plendennen, please.
Okay. So I, I'm, I motion to set a public hearing to hear, uh, VAC twenty-five zero-six on August seventh, twenty-twenty-five, at, what did we say?
It's at ten-thirty.
Ten, at ten-thirty AM, at three-fifteen East Canadian Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six oh-six, uh, thirty-three-six oh-two.
We have a motion from Councilmember Plendennen, with the same, Councilmember Vera, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
We have the nays, or if you could read into the record, Carlson and Hertek.
Motion carries with Henderson being absent at vote, and Carlson and Hertek voting no.
Thank you very much. We'll see you August seventh.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Yes, sir. All right. Uh, we go to consent agenda, Public Safety Committee, items five through fifteen, Councilman Vera.
Uh, yes, sir. Move, uh, the aforementioned items.
We have a motion from Councilmember Vera. Vera, do we have a second? Second, Councilmember Plendennen, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, Councilmember Hertek, you are the vice chair for sixteen through twenty-one.
I will move items sixteen through twenty-one.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Hertek, second, Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? All right. Any opposed?
And I will move items twenty-two through thirty-four.
And did we, we're not pulling thirty-five, no?
Well, thirty-five's at a different committee.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, we have a motion from Councilmember Hertek, second, Councilmember Vera, all in favor?
Aye.
I, I pulled thirty-five.
Okay.
Um, City Council, uh, excuse me, before you move on thirty-five, the clerk has a substitute resolution. There was one law firm that was on the list that we should have been removed.
Okay.
And so I would ask if you approve thirty-five, when you take up thirty-five, you, you do the substitute resolution that the clerk has, uh, on file.
Thank you very much. So we'll, we'll move the substitute, should it be moved. So Councilmember, um, Carlson has made a motion to pull thirty-five for discussion. Are you okay with that? Okay? Yes, sir. Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Second from Councilmember Plendennen, uh, Councilmember Carlson, you want to speak on it?
Yeah, I, two things. One is, um, the last time this came up, I, um, I recused myself because, uh, my firm works with one of the law firms. But afterwards, I had conversations that indicated that I didn't have to recuse myself. So, uh, there's nothing that earns of my private gain or loss. Marty, could you just weigh in on that publicly, please?
I recall the conversation. Um, I believe that, um...
There you go.
In the basis of our conversation at the time, I recall that it was my opinion that it nodded your, to your special private gain or loss, or rises to the, or, or rises to the level of a, uh, a financial conflict of interest.
So the, the other thing that I wanted to say is, I, I want to vote no for this because, as we talked about last week with charter amendments, um, I believe that, that it, it's not that the City of Tampa is a strong mayor for a government because it doesn't say that anywhere in the charter. It is, the power really rests with the legal department. And what this does is it allows the legal department to hire law firms without our approval. I think a hundred thousand dollars is too much, uh, but raising that, I think, is, is way too much. I think that there needs to be more public scrutiny, transparency, and, uh, that they, that they need to come to us. The other thing is that, uh, typically, the reason why a government agency would do this is to try to conflict out all these firms. If they don't actually do work for the city, in theory, I think by bar rules, they don't have to, um, conflict themselves out. But I think it's, it's, it's not a good idea to do it that way. Keeping it at what it was before is enough, so I'm gonna vote no. Thank you. Yeah, it's funny because both items that you brought is exactly the reason why I'd initially pulled it. And that's why I ended up having a subsequent conversation. They talked about, because I was about to conflicting out, and I'm thinking, God, that just seems really odd when you're binding every, every law firm in town. But they, I guess that is not a factor here. I, I, they, they gave an explanation that really satisfied my, uh, points on that. Um, you know, I guess, because this is a finite amount of, um, two-hundred thousand dollars for the, uh, for the entire fiscal year...
It's two-hundred thousand for each firm.
Yeah, but, but I'm saying it just, it's not, it's not a, it's not a, I mean, we're not like, we're talking about these five-million-dollar contracts and all that. I just did, I felt like it was de minimis. If they hire all of them, you multiply the number of firms times two-hundred thousand, that's a big number. Yeah, but I, I think what I, because I asked the same question. I think what I was told by law, uh, by legal was that, um, many of these people in this contract, it's just a contract, they're name-only. They don't actually use these folks, that, that, the amount of business that they're given. So they, they put out an RFP to solicit, you know, the, uh, Mel Morris is here, he can speak to it.
While it allows up to two-hundred thousand dollars each fiscal year, it's subject to budget and appropriation. So, uh, just so you all know, the amount of money in the legal department budget to hire outside legal, uh, counsel is less than two-hundred fifty thousand dollars. So really, it, so if, if we need to come to, if we need to hire a law firm for a large matter, we typically have to come before you or have a budget resolution at some point in time that allocates money for that representation.
Yes, ma'am. Wait, wait, wait. I had an order. Miranda, Vera, Hertek.
Do you just have a question about what he just said?
Is that all right?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, go ahead.
So you said that the total budget is two-hundred and fifty thousand?
About, that's about what we have allocated in our legal department budget for outside counsel, correct?
So it's not two-hundred?
But I heard, but I, Andrea showed me something yesterday.
Other departments have money allocated for specific matters, which money can be allocated for outside counsel if we need them. That's how, that, that's, that's another avenue. But again, it has to be something that's in their budget that you all have approved, for that purpose.
Good. So it's not like a five-million-dollar, okay, good.
It's not.
Councilman Miranda, Councilman Vera.
I, I don't know if I should recuse myself, and I have a family member who works for one of these firms. And I myself hired a firm that's here on the list, uh, not to let them go to do a work for me, uh, in case I, uh, go to heaven or hell, one of the two, in due time, that, uh, everything is done the way I want it. So, uh, there's where I'm at.
Yes, sir. Mr. Shelby?
Not that I say I'm leaving, just in case.
I guess...
Doctor told me I'm gonna live to hundreds of...
Okay. Well, I, I'm, so you... The question, the question, the question that I have is whether, and I, you know, maybe we can hold this item just so I can talk, to make sure if it's remote and speculative, then you can vote. But I certainly don't want you to be in a, in a position where you have a relative who's working for a law firm, and then you vote, and somebody alleges a conflict of interest. So you can either abstain in abundance of caution, um, or we can hold it for a while, and I'll have the opportunity to protect, you know, to at least make inquiries so I can protect you.
Fine.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vera, and then back to Hertek.
I just want to say, point of order, let's move this to, uh, after, or first of staff reports. That way, everybody can...
Yeah, let's do that. We'll, we'll, uh, move item number thirty-five to come up after lunch, and then, um... Do we have an item that was gonna come up first under, no, oh, yeah, well, yeah, that was the original request, so this will be...
In order of a motion to move item thirty-five with a substitute resolution after lunch?
Yeah, it'll be first under staff reports when we come back. All right. So, uh, item thirty-six through thirty-seven?
Thirty-six and thirty-seven.
Councilmember Miranda makes a motion. Do we have a second? Yeah. Second from Councilmember Plendennen, all in favor?
Aye.
And Councilmember Carlson, thirty-eight through fifty-two, but there were some items that you wanted...
Yeah, I wanted to pull.
I wanted to pull forty-five and forty-six for a separate vote, please.
All right. So do thirty-five, thirty-eight through fifty-two minus forty-five and forty-six.
Yep, so move.
We have a motion from Councilmember Carlson, second, Councilmember Plendennen, all in favor?
And can I, we do the same thing, because I want to actually discuss forty-five and forty-six. Can we move forty-five and forty-six to, to the third, second and third item after, um, lunch?
Thirty-five, forty-five, and forty-six. Let me just mark it. So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
And just for staff's clarification, so when they come back prepared to speak, my intention is to ask about the collective bargaining agreement. Um, the, uh, what's happening with the county construction across the street. And of course, it's been talked over and over again about what we can do for the Yellow Jackets. Thank you.
All right. Wait, Mr., we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That's to move those items after thirty-five. So it'll be thirty-five, forty-five, forty-six after, uh, lunch, and first under staff reports. Mr. Shelby?
First, that's first under staff reports, which means your one-thirty public hearings will be heard before those items?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yeah?
The one-thirty public hearings will be heard after lunch.
The community benefit script as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we went through all this. Our last, uh, I went all the way through fifty-two, is that correct?
Yes.
So I move item fifty-three through fifty-six.
We have a motion from Councilmember Clendenin, do we have a second? Second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye. All right, can we get a motion to set the public hearing for fifty-seven? We have a motion to set the public hearing for fifty-seven for June twelfth, 2025, at five oh-one PM, and June, July twenty-fourth, July twenty-fourth, 2025, at five oh-one PM in City Council Chambers, three fifteen East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor Tampa, three through six oh-two. A motion and second, all in favor? Aye. Second was Clendenin. All right, can I get a motion to open the ten AM and ten-thirty public hearings? We have a motion from Councilmember Clendenin, we have a second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye. All right. Let me see, I have one person registered to speak on item sixty-three. We'll, when we get to it, we'll swear in. The first few are non-quasi-judicial, but if you're going to speak on any of these public hearings at ten and ten-thirty, please stand, raise your right hand, and we'll swear you in. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, may I say something really fast? Sure.
If I wanted to, I didn't think it was going to be relevant, but I need to leave here at about five-thirty. My son has a final play this evening at six-thirty in Tampa Palms, and it takes about eight hours to get there, so.
Somebody should do something about that.
Right? But just again, yeah, I know, right? But just FYI for council.
All right. Item number fifty-eight is the first one. Is there city staff? Yes, there's Mr. Collins. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, Danny Collins, with your planning commission staff. I was sworn in. Item fifty-eight is file number TACPA twenty-four nineteen. It's an ordinance amending the Tampa comprehensive plan, the future land use element, and the future land use map for the property located at seven oh-six South Moody Avenue. The request is to change the future land use from residential ten, community mixed use thirty-five. This was approved at your first reading on April twenty-fourth, and is back to you today for second reading, and that concludes my presentation.
Yes, sir. All right. Do we have an applicant for fifty-eight? Mr. Hudson, come on up, sir, fifty-eight.
Tyler Hudson, four hundred North Ashley Drive, nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on fifty-eight? We have a motion to close from Councilmember Clendenin, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item number fifty-eight, Councilmember Miranda, would you like to read it?
I move number fifty-eight, file number CACPA twenty-four dash nineteen. An ordinance presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance amended Tampa comprehensive plan, future land use element, future land use map, and the property located at seven oh-six South Moody Avenue for residential ten, R-ten, to community mixed use, R- thirty-five, CMU thirty-five, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion and a second from Councilmember Viera. Please record your vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. He's in the back. Item number fifty-nine.
Danny Collins, again, with your planning commission staff. I was sworn in. Item fifty-nine is TACPA twenty-four twenty. It's an ordinance amending the Tampa comprehensive plan, specifically the future land use map for the property located at seven oh-one South Howard Avenue. The request is to change the future land use from residential ten to community mixed use thirty-five. This was approved at first reading on April twenty-fourth, and is back to you today for second reading, and that concludes our presentation, and the planning commission is also the applicant on this one as well.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Collins? Nope. Is there anybody here applicant for item number fifty-nine? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on fifty-nine? We have a motion to close from Councilmember Clendenin, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye. Councilmember Viera, how do you read the Harrison Boone stopple item? So you, are you good?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so fifty-nine, go ahead, sir.
I'll take the burden. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. Ordinance amending the Tampa comprehensive plan, future land use element, future land use map, and the property located at seven oh-one South Howard Avenue from residential ten, R-ten, and community mixed use thirty-five, CMU thirty-five, to community mixed use thirty-five, CMU thirty-five, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion and a second from Councilmember Clendenin. Please record your vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. All right. Item sixty. Yes, sir.
Good morning, City Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead. Please state your name.
Hi. Good morning. Council and chairman, Leo De Bartolavon Development Coordination, I have been sworn. Item number sixty is AB twenty, AB two twenty-four thirty-three for the property located at three thousand and three West Cypress Street. The request is for alcohol beverage sales, large venue classification, beer, wine, and liquor for consumption on premises and package sales, off-premises consumption. Site plan modifications were required to be made between first and second readings. Those changes have been made. Plans have been certified, and a copy has been provided to the clerk, and I'm available for any questions.
We have any, any questions for the gentleman? No? Yes, sir, please state your name.
Steve Michelini, representing the petitioner. We did add the covered bike that you'd requested as part of our site plan amendments, and we thank you for continuing the legacy of Alessi Bakery. It's a very important icon in Tampa, and you've made a great part of that happen, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And my wife and I were looking at our wedding pictures the other night, and she reminded me that our wedding cake was from Alessi Bakery, and how delicious it was. So forgot to mention it at the first hearing. Councilmember Carlson, did you want to speak? Okay. All right, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item sixty?
Motion to close.
Wait, we have somebody coming up. No? No? We have a motion to close from Councilmember Clendenin, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Councilmember Henderson, item sixty.
Yes, sir. I move file number AB two twenty-four thirty-three, an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance approving a special use permit, SU two, for alcoholic beverage sales, large venue, consumption on premises, and package sales, off-premises consumption, and making lawful the sale of beverages regardless of alcoholic content, beer, wine, and liquor at or from that certain lot, plot, or tract of land located at three thousand three West Cypress Street, as more particularly described in section two, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are repealed, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Henderson, second from Councilmember Viera. Please record your vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, council.
Thank you very much, sir. Item number sixty-one. Okay, go ahead, sir. Please state your name again.
Good morning. Good morning, again, City Council and chairman, Leo De Bartolavon Development Coordination. Item number sixty-one is AB two twenty-five oh-one for the property located at six oh-eight North Willow Avenue. The request is for alcoholic beverage sales, small venue classification, beer, wine, and liquor for consumption on premises and package sales, off-premises consumption. Site plan modifications were required to be made between first and second readings. Those changes have been made. The plans have been certified, and a copy has been provided to the clerk, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for the gentleman? I see none. Hello, please state your name.
Christopher Walters, I'm the applicant.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am? You want to speak as well?
She's my way.
Okay. Go ahead.
I just wanted to go reply back to Councilwoman Hurtak. Did I say that right? I'm sorry. Hurtak?
Hurtak, but that's.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on your bike question last time with the dedicated bike racks, and I just wanted to let you know I did follow up with the leadership at Jade at North Hyde Park. Fortunately, right now, as it states currently, they only have bike racks for the residents at Jade at North Hyde Park, but I did say that we do express an interest in having dedicated bike racks for the bikers that do visit our facility, because, again, like I said last time, there's a lot of people that just kind of like park it on our patio or anywhere else because there's no, you know, dedicated bike lanes. And now that, you know, you mentioned that, I do see a lot of UPS trucks and FedEx trucks that drive right down that bike lane. You know, I think that's the one that the city is actually trying to connect all the way to Ebor, and unfortunately, people are not really using it right, so, you know, I do see that, but I did, you know, express interest with the leadership there that that's probably, you know, the right thing to do is to place some dedicated bikes.
Great. I appreciate you continuing to advocate for that, and I believe someone, I don't know if Ms. Johnson, I'll have, I'm going to ask Ms. Scharf to meet you outside when we're done, and she can give you the number to call when you see people parking in the bike lane, and so they can get a ticket.
Right, okay.
I greatly appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
See? Getting one more advocate every single time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item sixty-one?
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilmember Clendenin, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye. Councilmember Clendenin, I think it's you.
I move file number AB two twenty-five zero-one, an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance approving a special use permit, SU two, for alcoholic beverage sales, small venue, consumption on premises, and package sales, off-premises consumption, and making lawful the sale of beverages regardless of alcoholic content, beer, wine, and liquor in, at, or from the certain lot, plot, or tract of land located at six zero eight North Willow Avenue, unit A one hundred, first floor only, as more particularly described in section three, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are repealed, repealing AB one twenty-four seventeen, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Clendenin, second from Councilmember Viera. Please record your vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am?
My aide is out there so she can reach you and let you know. Thank you.
All right. Item number sixty-two.
Good morning, council. For the record, Christopher Demont for Development Coordination, I have been sworn in. Item number sixty-two is REZ twenty-five zero-six. This item is a rezoning request for property located at one-one-eight Bosporus Avenue. The request is to rezone from residential single-family sixty to residential single-family fifty. This is a Euclidian zoning. There's no site plan associated with this request, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for the gentleman? All right, is there an applicant for item number sixty-two? Yes, sir, please state your name.
Alex Rios.
Anything to add, sir?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Anybody in the public wish to speak on item sixty-two? Yes, sir? Wait, wait, come on up, sir. Please state your name.
Good morning, Patrick Murphy.
Hello, sir.
Hi there. I'm here on, for two reasons on this project. First, on behalf of the Davis Island Civic Association, the Davis Island Civic Association submitted a letter of opposition opposing the project, opposing the approval at second reading for, based on the lack of nearby RS fifty housing, citing concerns from the neighbors about flooding, increased density in an already dense area, the impact on traffic, congestion, and issues that there may be setting a precedent for this, especially given that it's next to some RS seventy-five zoning. That's on behalf of the Davis Island Civic Association. On behalf of myself as an individual and resident of Davis Island, I support the project. I think it's great. It's near multifamily housing. Staff found it consistent on almost every factor. The proposed lots are kind of in between the fifty and sixty zone, they're fifty-five feet each, and I think having new houses that are going to be up to the code and a little more resilient in the future, I think, is good for the island as a whole. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, Councilman Clendenin?
Yeah, I've had, you know, I've had discussion in the past about this type of rezoning, especially, you know, attempt, Davis Island is such a distinctive neighborhood, it's one of our, you know, legacy neighborhoods, and, you know, and I get it, and I get some of the neighbors' concern, but I think you nailed it. One, the proximity to the commercial area, and to the other similarly zoned properties, you know, that zoning, that pattern of development is so linear in that area, so when it's like when staff tried to find parcels, you know, it was kind of a little dis, almost like disingenuous because it was tough to say this is equal to that because of, you know, everything else that was so much closer was more similar in development. But I do, I just wanted, for the folks on Davis Islands and other distinctive neighborhoods like this, our stereic neighborhoods, my interest is in preserving those neighborhoods, you know, but we also have to be realistic, and we saw what happened with the flooding. We rebuild these housing stocks to current standards so that we can avoid the type of devastation that we've seen, and that's, and that's why I'm going to vote you in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
No, and I agree, and, no, I mean, my vote's going to stay the same, and I appreciate the comments by Mr. Murphy with the points of distinction that a lawyer would appreciate, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to close? A motion to close from Councilmember Clendenin, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Councilmember Hurtak, would you mind reading this?
Yes. Item number sixty-two, file number REZ twenty-five dash oh-six, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of one-eighteen Bosporus Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification RS sixty residential single-family to RS fifty residential single-family, providing an effective date.
We have a motion and a second from Councilmember Viera. Please record your vote.
Motion carries with Carlson voting no.
Okay, Alex, with my expectations, let me. Thank you very much. Item number sixty-three. Item number sixty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Christopher Demont for Development Coordination. Item number sixty-three is REZ twenty-five one four. This item is a rezoning request for property located at eighty-four fourteen North Eighteenth Street. Request is to rezone from residential single-family fifty to planned development for residential single-family detached uses. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I am available for questions.
Any questions for the gentleman? I see none. Is there an applicant for item number sixty-three? Oh. Mr. Mansour, did you get sworn in?
Yes, sir.
No, please raise your right hand, and we'll swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're going to provide is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, sir. Please state your name.
Ali Mansour. I'm the applicant for this application.
Anything to add, sir?
No, I just want to thank the city staff from the zoning department for their professionalism and their hard work on this project and other projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Item sixty-three? I see no one. Motion to close from Councilmember Miranda, do a second. Second from Councilmember Clendenon, all in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson, would you like to read sixty-three?
Move file number sixty-three, file number REZ twenty-five dash fourteen. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of eight-four-one-four North Eighteenth Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section One, from zoning district classification RS fifty residential single-family to PD planned development residential single-family detached, providing effective date.
We have a motion, and we have a second from Councilmember Marandall, and record your vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. All right. Item number sixty-four is a ten-thirty AM public hearing which we open regarding second public hearing to a development agreement. Ms. Johns, yes, ma'am, please state your name.
Hi. Dr. Johns, Legal Department. This is the second public hearing for the development agreement for the Thirty-Fifth Street multifamily project. To remind you all, this is a proposed development under House Bill thirteen thirty-nine, which allows residential to be built in industrial or commercial zoned properties, provided that at least ten percent of the units are affordable under Florida statutes, which is one-hundred-and-twenty percent AMI and below. At the first hearing, it was requested that the developer add a note to the site plan about covered secure bicycle parking. Those notes have been added. I'll actually. So those notes have been added here and here, and so if approved, this site plan will be substituted into the development agreement that you have. Since this is the second public hearing, you have a resolution to act on today, and I will now turn it over to the developer unless you have any questions for me.
All right. Mr. Bowen.
Bowen Arnold for the applicant. I've been read in, sworn in. We've got the architect here, Tim Clemmers.
Okay. And did you want to discuss the covered parking, sir? Yes.
So we made two adjustments to this, to the site plan since our, the first reading. We've indicated the location of covered accessible parking for the commercial space. It's a twenty-seven-hundred square foot commercial space under the city of Tampa. Zoning ordinance requires three bicycle parking spaces. We've provided a cover for four bicycle parking spaces. And then we've also added a note showing the covered secure resident bicycle parking within the parking garage. Again, according to the city of Tampa zoning code, required to have twenty bicycle parking spaces for the project. We've got a space that's large enough to handle thirty bicycle parking spaces within the parking garage.
Councilmember Hertak.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate these changes, and, you know, one project at a time, we're going to make this city super bike friendly. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anything else to add?
Nope.
All right. Is there anybody here for public comment for item sixty-four? Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Anybody else for public comment on sixty-four? Okay, you are the speaker. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Melissa Miller. I'm a resident, literally right across the street from the project. And mainly our concern, most of the people in the neighborhood, and mine especially because it's fifty yards from my house, is regarding the entrance and exit to the property. Twelfth Street, which is the street I live on, is a very quiet, very narrow street, and we maybe get thirty cars a day driving down that street. And with putting in two-hundred units, that's going to easily change to eight-hundred cars a day. So I have a copy of the original plan where they had, if you can see here, they had the entrance and exit to the parking structure off of Thirty-Fourth Street, which is a four-lane street. And then they changed it to... Instead, they took it away from Thirty-Fourth, and now they've added it to Twelfth and Thirty-Fifth, which is, my house is about right here. This is a very small street. I actually have pictures of it. I understand that there was a reason they changed it, and it was about maybe utility trucks, or fire trucks, or emergency trucks being able to do a three-point turn, and off of Thirty-Fourth, there wasn't enough room for that, and I totally understand that. What we in the neighborhood is proposing is maybe put the entrance and exit back on Thirty-Fourth just for the parking structure. So that means all of the tenants that need access to the parking structure would exit and enter through Thirty-Fourth. And then the utility trucks, emergency vehicles, and even the guests for the guest parking, that's going to be on the other side of the, on the east side of the building. They can enter through Thirty-Fourth, or, I'm sorry, through Twelfth and Thirty-Fifth. That would be a lot less traffic coming down Twelfth Street. The majority of the traffic would stay on Thirty-Fourth, which again is a four-lane street. I think it's more quick for that. I know also in their proposal, they say that a traffic study is going to be done, and I just wondered if they've done that already, or if that's going to be done at a later date. They also have here that they're acknowledging that Twelfth Avenue is eighteen feet of paved, paved street. One of the residents in our neighborhood actually took it upon himself to pay a traffic engineer, and he came up with a lot more information that they have to do in order to have all of this traffic coming in off of Twelfth and Thirty-Fifth. First of all, they need to have ten-foot on each, each direction. They need to have two-foot Miami curbs, and they need to have paved markings on the street, and they would also need to install a turn lane. There's literally no space on that street for all of this to happen, so I don't understand how it could stay the same.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Anybody else for public comment? If not, you'll have a five-minute rebuttal time. Mr. Arnold, yes, sir?
Yes, um, yes, the development agreement has a requirement for us to do a traffic study, and we certainly acknowledge that. We understand, I mean, originally it proposed coming off of Thirty-Fourth, but it's not trucks access, it's infrastructure and easements. And, Tim, do you want to describe just a little bit?
On the, the earlier version of the site plan that was shown by the previous speaker, a wing of the building extended over here onto the eastern portion of the property. We were unaware at the time that although Thirty-Fifth had been vacated, there still was a fifty-foot utility easement through Thirty-Fifth, and we could not build on that. So we had to shift the building over, and basically, given the grand trees, given the utility easement, and shifting the building over, we had to lose the room that we had available for the, the drive access off of Thirty-Fourth. But in addition, as mentioned, for sanitation and for fire, we needed to provide three-point turnaround on the property. And again, the only place that that really fit was to utilize the Thirty-Fifth Street right-of-way, even though it's been vacated, to sort of bring it back. We understand the concerns on traffic. We think that there are actually reasonable concerns, and we're very much in favor of any kind of appropriate traffic calming devices, including perhaps stop signs at the intersection of what would be, what was Thirty-Fifth and Twelfth, or speed humps. We, you know, we recognize that, and we'll be happy to work with the city as this project progresses. But we don't think that current lack of traffic calming, which wasn't needed in the current configuration of that neighborhood, should be a reason to deny the project.
Councilmember Hertak.
I have a question for staff.
Who is the staff?
Well, I didn't know if someone was online who could also, I mean...
I don't know, are they on there?
I don't know. Um, but that's, yeah. No, I just wondered if there's anything we could put on the site plan about stop signs, doing something like that to help alleviate the residents' concerns? I mean, if the developer's in favor of it, and, I mean, is that something that we can add or add... Oh, there's Ms. Feeley. Wow! It is sort of like, like a snap and you appear. Do we need to swear her in?
Ms. Feeley, can you raise your right hand, and we'll swear you in, just in case.
Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're going to provide is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Feeley, yes?
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Abby Feeley. I just wanted, typically, what we would do is, given that those parameters are the, go with the right-of-way department and mobility, we would typically put some sort of note that, you know, traffic calming mechanisms or stop signs would be reviewed and approved through the permitting process in coordination with the mobility department, or something to those effects. Eric Cotton's out of town this week, and I know that his team reviewed this, and they ran this through a DRC, just like we would a regular rezoning. But in, typically, these types of agreements control the private property, and, and the right-of-way, and the public, and the traffic circulation are handled through mobility. So if you would like to add something like this, I think this is at second reading. Again, it would have to come back. I could definitely work with mobility in between now and then to see if they've looked at this in terms of that, and then we could work with Tyler and his team about, you know, addressing that modification to the site plan, or at least reporting back to you that per that discussion, here is the outcome of that discussion. So that, that is at the pleasure of counsel, and we're happy to take whatever direction you would like to. But it would put this back, Ms. Johns could confirm, it would put this item back again on a second reading.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I was, I was gonna, well, it seemed like...
Yeah, I would, I'm, I'm just, if I remember, I mean, this was sort of found consistent by everybody, so I, I don't know how much they can do if the transportation, and everybody already looked at this, and mobility looked at it, found it consistent.
Well, how...
I mean, I agree with you, because I was, I'm concerned, I was concerned too, but if they found it consistent, I don't know if that's out of our hands.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Ms. Feeley, are there other ways that the... So the applicant themselves said that they agree that there should be some traffic calming measures. So at what point would that happen in this development, and how we, how could we get the neighbors involved at that time?
Well, typically, I mean, those traffic calming mechanisms are governed by the mobility department. There are standards that go with them, right? The placement of the stop signs at so many intersections, I think they don't, that, that's all under, with Brandon's team. So I would suggest either continuing this, so we could have those discussions and come back with a meaningful type of recommendation for you, or get feedback from them. I don't want to speak. And that really is more of a very technical type of process. So I don't know, if they say the spacing has to be X or Y, we have technical standards from the intersections, how far the driveways need to be, et cetera. I don't, I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver when it comes to making that a public type of process. I'd really like to be able to speak to mobility before we put some sort of condition on that couldn't, could or could not be fulfilled. I just have not had an opportunity to have that discussion.
Okay, that's fair. Applicants, any thoughts?
Um, no, other than...
Just, just, if you could state your name first, sorry, just the record.
I'm sorry, Bowen Arnold for the applicant. We're, we want to work with the neighbors. We want it to be successful and a good development. We have to do a traffic study under Paragraph Four of the development agreement. We haven't done that yet. We're going to do that. But we support, as Tim said, any kind of traffic calming devices, and we'll do what we need to do. There is also a sidewalk around the development, so that's going to provide a little bit of around this corner.
So, is there a way that when you get your traffic study, do you have contact information for the neighbors and the neighborhood?
We, we do. In fact, we have, we have a lot of support from the, from the Neighborhood Association.
Okay, so what I might suggest is reaching out to the woman who spoke today, making sure, especially because she, since she's across the street, that as that parking study gets done, or the, the study gets, traffic study, and parking study, traffic, traffic study gets done, that, that everyone have a little bit of input and understanding about what goes on.
We, we will do that.
Thank you very much. So are we going to send this back to, are we going to support it today?
You would prefer to move forward today, but...
Could you approve it's subject to the requirements for a traffic study?
We can't because it's already at the, the final stage.
It's the final stages.
I would say we motioned to approve it today, and I would, if your neighbors...
Yes, sir.
Do you want to, okay, yeah. No, I mean, I, I, let's put it this way. From, from the words I heard from Mr. Arnold today, right now, they're going to work with the neighborhood, they're going to do the traffic study, they're going to show it to them.
Yes.
I, I, given the consistent finding already on this issue, which they're going to go a step further in, from what I understand, I'm fine with voting on it today, just as a, I guess, if you will, as a measure of, and I know, I won't say anything further because I don't want to, but yeah, I'm fine with voting on it today.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to close?
Motion.
Motion to close from Councilmember Clendenon. Second from?
Second, Vieira.
Councilman Vieira, all in favor?
Aye.
Who wishes to move this resolution? We have a motion from Councilmember Clendenon, and a second from Councilmember Vieira, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Please read the vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Congratulations. All right. We can't touch the one-thirty public hearings until one-thirty. Mr. Shelby, what do you suggest? We have those big items in the understatement.
We have, pardon? I was going to raise the issue, I believe, by my count, in numbers seventy-two, seventy-four, seventy-five, and seventy-six.
Motion to move seventy-two, seventy-four, seventy-five, and, or, yeah, seventy-six.
Seventy-two, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six. We have a motion from...
And eighty-two and eighty-three, I believe we also motioned.
Those are, to receive and file.
Yeah, we didn't need staff...
Oh, okay, sorry.
Or we didn't need staff present for it. So you, you want to do everything you said except eighty-two and eighty-three?
Sure.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Hertak, second from Councilmember Marandall, all in favor?
Aye.
And that was seventy-two, seventy-four, seventy-five, and seventy-six. Yes?
Chairman, if you want to just receive and file eighty-two and eighty-three, then staff will leave some notes, but they don't have to come.
I'll receive and file eighty-two and eighty-three.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? All right. Any opposed?
And then, can we do sixty-nine and seventy-nine?
Let's do it.
Let's go. All right. Item number sixty-nine, there is a PowerPoint for this. Yes, ma'am, are you ready with it?
Here, here we go. We're ready.
You're up. Perfect timing.
Ran from Hannah to get here.
Wow.
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Heather Bonds, Historic Preservation Specialist. Today, I'm here to present a request for a Historic Preservation Tax Exemption for your consideration. All right. Historic Preservation Advilaram Tax Exemption is one of our preservation incentive programs that we have that encourage and can help offset some of the costs of rehabilitation. Built in nineteen fifteen, eighteen oh seven North Morgan is a contributing structure in the Tampa Heights Historic District. It is owned by Harvey Schoenberg at his law offices. As part of this rehabilitation, this structure was relocated from the lot to the west and reoriented to face North Morgan Street. This allowed for a new multifamily development on those west portion lots. Here's the impressive before and after photos of the front facade.
Very nice.
And it's always fun just to see a house on the move, so threw those in there for you today. This is the interior side facade. This project included a new parking lot and a parking shade that you can see there. The wood porch was restored and refinished after the gray paint was stripped from the existing porch, and it was stored to a typical hardwood front porch. There are eight unique chimney mantles. Every single mantle throughout the structure is completely different, and they restored each of the eight mantles. These are two before and afters. The entrance lobby with the original banisters and stair treads and wainscoting was all rehabilitated. The chandelier was likely added in the nineteen fifties, but Mr. Schoenberg actually had the whole thing rehabilitated and restored, with each glass piece taken off, cleaned, and put back on. And I forgot how many pieces he said, but it was pretty impressive. The interior layout was also preserved, and many of the original details were restored as well. Overall, Mr. Schoenberg and his team with lead architect Andrew Mattson saved a beautiful showpiece here in Tampa Heights. And the ARC thought so too. They recommended approval on April seventh, and staff respectfully recommend city council approve the Advilaram based on it meeting the criteria in ordinance ninety-three dash one thirty-seven.
Thank you very much. Any questions? That's a beautiful restoration job. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item, sixty-nine? I see no one. Any questions from council? If not, can I get a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close from Councilmember Clendenon. Second from Councilmember Marandall, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilmember Marandall, would you like to read sixty-nine?
File number sixty, file number HTX twenty-five dash one-three-nine eighty-four. Our two percent for first reading consideration. I'm going to support this total provision property tax exemption application related to the restoration, renovation, rehabilitation of certain property over Harbor's Armory Trustee located in eighteen oh seven North Orange Street down in Florida, Tampa Heights. Historic district based upon certain findings, providing for notice to property appraisers in Hillsborough County, providing for severability, providing for appeal of all ordinance, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Vieira, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
Second motion passed unanimously. Would Hertak be an abstinent vote? Second reading and adoption will be held on June fifth, twenty twenty-five, at ten AM, at three fifteen East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six oh-two.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item number seventy. Yes, ma'am. What was your name for the record?
Heather Bonds, B-O-N-D-S.
Thank you very much. Item number seventy.
All right. Heather Bonds, Historic Preservation Specialist. I have another tax exemption for your consideration today.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. This structure was built in nineteen seventeen. It is part of the Hyde Park Local Historic District. Drew Newman and his wife Ariel Peters are the owner, and they took special care in restoring this structure as well. The rehabilitation of this craftsman-style bungalow preserved many of those craftsman elements, such as the large front porch, brickwork, and as you can see, a nice paint job can be incredibly impactful. These are some beautiful craftsman colors.[1712.73] job can be incredibly impactful. These are some beautiful craftsman colors. All of the original windows were also restored. Here's a close-up of one of those windows. They helped restore some of the damaged wood. There are several different types of windows on this structure, and they took care to restore each of those unique style of windows. The gable ends were restored with the appropriate venting. You can see here in the before picture how they installed a venting appropriately, and they restored it back to the historic form. The interior was preserved and restored from the floor to the ceiling beams. All built-ins were rehabilitated, and Mr. Newman even had the cabinet doors replicated when someone broke into his house during the restoration and stole the iron work from all of those cabinets. They left one, and he went and had the, the other three restored to look just like that one.
Well, he did a beautiful job.
Yeah, this is one of my favorite ones. They even put the push button lights to replace the modern white plastic model to add to the historic authenticity. They restored the fireplaces throughout the house, and the hardwood floor was refurbished. We thank Mr. Newman and his wife, Ms. Peters, for such incredible attention to detail. The ARC voted to recommend council approve the tax exemption on April seventh, and staff found it meets the criteria of ordinance ninety-three one thirty-seven, and respectfully requests council's approval.
Wait, wait. Do you have any public comment on this item, seventy? I see none. Can I get a motion to close? Motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Clendenin, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And we have a motion to approve item number seventy?
That's an ordinance.
Oh, it's an ordinance. Go ahead.
Was sixty-nine also read, by the way?
You know what?
We didn't do that one.
We didn't read it. I'm sorry. Please read item seventy, and then we'll go back to sixty-nine, just for the record. Go ahead, sir.
Oh, no, I just wanted to say on sixty-nine, I was in the back and I was watching.
Well, we have to read it.
Yeah, I know. But that's what I'm saying.
All right, Councilmember Clendenin.
Do you want me to just go with sixty-nine, so we can do it in order?
No, we have to reopen that.
Okay, great. So I move file number HTX twenty-five one three nine eight six, an ordinance presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance approving an historic preservation property tax exemption application relative, relative to the restoration, renovation, or rehabilitation of a certain property owned by Andrew M. Newman and Ariel E. Peters located at one seven zero four West Jeton Avenue, Tampa, Florida, in the Hyde Park Historic District, based upon certain findings, providing for the notice to the property appraiser of Hillsborough County, providing for severability, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing an effective date.
We have a motion. We have a second from Councilmember Hertak. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Yes, ma'am.
So we're going to move on.
With second reading and adoption will be held on June fifth, twenty twenty-five, at ten a.m. At three fifteen East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, three three six oh two.
Motion to reopen sixty-nine.
We have a motion, and we have a second from Councilmember Hertak. All in favor? Aye. Councilmember Hertak?
I just want to, again, repeat it for the record that I was watching in the.
Would you like to read it?
Yes, I am prepared to vote, so.
All right, motion to close again?
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilmember Clendenin. Do we have a second? Second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye. All right, Councilmember Hertak, sixty-nine, so we can read it for the record.
Thank you. Yes, file number HTX twenty-five dash one three nine eight four, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance preserving and historic preservation property tax exemption application relative to the restoration, renovation, or rehabilitation of certain property owned by Harvey Schoenbrunn trustee located at eighteen oh seven North Morgan Street, Tampa, Florida, in the Tampa Heights Historic District, based upon certain findings, providing for notice to the property appraiser of Hillsborough County, providing for severability, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing an effective date.
We have a motion. We have a second from, I'm sorry, motion from Councilmember Hertak, second from Councilmember Clendenin. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I've been watching this one get renovated, and it's been a real pleasure. It's on one of my bike routes, and it's been really neat to watch it happen.
I want to say these are tough to read, because we're so used to the flow.
Exactly.
Language is so different than.
Yeah, it is, it is.
It's like, this doesn't seem right.
All right, please read the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on June fifth, twenty twenty-five, at ten a.m. At three fifteen East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, three three six oh two.
All right. Yes, ma'am. We have, we can break for lunch? Perry, are you, can you do it in a few minutes?
Let's do it.
Which item are you, Mr. Perry?
Yeah, let's just find out.
Yeah, let's see. Go ahead, sir.
Mike Perry, Budget Officer, on item number seventy-three. I do have Molly Clark scheduled to be here at one-thirty. That way she can assist us. And I don't think I can do the mid-year review in such short time.
Okay.
But thank you for offering.
Sure you could.
Just thought we should ask.
Thank you.
Do you want a break for lunch?
Yes.
And we come back at one-thirty?
Yes.
All right, we are in recess till one-thirty.